All over the town council of Breckenridge work session Tuesday, May 24th, 2022 is 3:00 PM. And we begin with Mark Truckee. Decisions, everyone. Any questions? Anybody see a need for a call up this evening? Questions?
A couple of questions on the Class A application for the gondola subdivision. Just going through the notes. And specifically looking at nine dash two dash four five C three where it talks about, let me get to it. In general, side lot lines should be, shall be at right angles or radial to curving street lines unless a variation from this rule provides a better street plan or lot layout. Lots should, shall take the form of plain geometric shapes, except where topographic conditions require otherwise for environmentally sensitive development. And just from the application, it didn't appear that that was satisfied.
Yeah, thanks, Jay. Yeah, Dick had gave me a quick call about this earlier, just asked the same question. So yeah, it's not just straight lines on the app. And what I, maybe if I could just to pull this up to show you.
Kind of look like a Picasso portrait.
So now I can go down here, correct Peyton?
The concern for me just came in the fact that it was in the core of town where the, you know, the lots and blocks should be more.
I'm sorry. Okay, thank you. Yeah, so this shows the, the South Gold Rush, the South Gold Rush lot, which was subdivided into, I think, lots one, two, and three. And the green is the master plan. And we overlaid the red, which is the proposed subdivision over the top of it to show how it lines up with the master plan designation. Now you're right. I mean, there's, these are not straight geometric rectangular shapes here. We did ask BGV to more make these straight lines as opposed to the old, what was in the master plan, this area that kind of meandered out here in different areas. The same on the other. So yes, they're not entirely geometric shapes, you know, in terms of straight lines. The reason this was drawn like this, BGV was its four acres in size, and that was a requirement in terms of the requirement for them to dedicate four acres of the more prime wetlands, which is in this area here. So.
You scraped it again? That's the wetland?
Yeah, the wetlands go beyond it actually, but there was a requirement in the master plan to dedicate four acres to the town. So, and we have made exceptions before to go around wetlands for these type of, you know, subdivisions when that made sense. So the reason they're doing this is because they still wanted to split off the property, the middle parcel here is actually going to go to Vale. And then the same thing is going to, basically Vale is going to retain that. BGV acquires this right here. This comes to the town. And then if you go over to the North Gondola Lot, this area to the north goes to BGV, the line's fainter, but it goes like this. This is the area Vale maintains, which is the existing gondola. The new gondola going across Park Avenue, and then the park area as well. And finally, the third parcel on that lot is over here for the transit center. So it's largely intended to mimic the master plan in terms of the lines and the boundaries that were kind of established with the master plan and to create that ownership that they were hoping to do. You know, we haven't been 100% consistent on that policy, I guess, in the past. I will say that just a couple of weeks ago with Altavertity Two, we had some lines that were a little bit irregular in shape to like related with the P in that. In fact, I've got that right here.
Of town.
No, it's not the core of town, right? This area is, it's the same policy, though, that apply, you know, subdivision standard.
Mark, what's purpose of lot two?
This middle one?
Yeah.
Ski area apparently wanted to retain part of that ownership there. This part right down here, Eric, is for the gondola overpass, but then that goes on to across this, you know, up onto. It was our understanding originally that this was all, all this gondola, the existing gondolignment was all gonna come under, stay under ski area ownership, but that's not how they proposed it. And I guess our understanding is that this is, this is okay with tram board requirements and all that in terms of, because it gains height quickly going over that, that area.
And is there any density associated with lot two?
No density with lot two, or lot one. All the densities in here. Yeah.
I mean, what would it really matter then? I mean, really, if, if you squared off lot one, there would just be, or lot, lot one, there would just be more property in lot one. Where they're going to develop. What, why would we care that there are these angles?
Well, it would go to us.
No, it wouldn't.
Block one, doesn't, isn't that getting conveyed to us?
Well, yeah, but only four acres of it. You're not going to get, you're not going to get them to convey more by straightening lines up.
But I guess.
Their commitment is four acres.
But then they'd be consistent with the, with the code.
Well, then they could just run a straight line through and leave some of the wetlands in lot two then and get four acres if that's. I mean, this gives us more actual wetlands if they do it this way as opposed to cutting a line that's farther to the left to give you your four acres.
No, because we're getting that.
To the left.
Yeah.
Yeah. So if the line, if the line moved, it was straight and moved over to the left, and they drew a straight line that gave us four acres, that would just leave more wetlands in lot two, which I don't know what the scary ones with it, but.
Our understanding is this area is probably the best in terms of the quality of the wetlands, this area right in here. So to Eric's point, getting some of this that the town acquires is probably a good thing.
Nothing's happened on that portion.
No, no, I mean, even regardless, there's, there's wetlands that extend beyond here, over in here some, there's still our wetland requirements to apply.
Correct.
So I guess my question is, what's the point of the code? Why does the code say to do that? But in this case, we're just saying, we're not going to do that.
Well, because we, well, because we're trying to mimic the master plan lines. And the green line is a master plan line. So we're trying to kind of stay consistent with that. And I think it's, and back to the issue of quality wetlands, having the town in control of that as opposed to it being part of Vale is probably a better thing for us. We, we saw this as a good thing to implement.
I think originally in the subdivision code, right angles and straight lines are, are really better for subdivisions where you have homes next to each other. So you can't have homes that, you can't carve out lots that had, take advantage of, you know, a bunch of trees because this guy's going to pay more for this lot and this guy gets a smaller lot. I think that's the, probably the genesis, it probably has less to do with, with this kind of subdivision and more to do with it, with a normal like highland subdivision.
I just wonder if if these lot lines can't be drawn straight or in simple geometrics, you know, shapes to fit the master plan. Is it perhaps a master plan needs to change and not the lot lines? It just maybe, you know, is this a proof or is this showing that there's too much programming for, for that area? If we can't draw lot lines that are, that fit the code?
Yeah, and that's my concern. Right there.
I mean, they could draw, they could have, they could make the lot lines work if they had less buildings, less program, right?
Yeah.
I mean, in the case of these two, it doesn't really affect the development at all. I mean, this is pretty straight line here and here, and it's essentially, this is where all the developments limited to on South Gold Rush lot.
Yeah, if you go down to North Gondola, though, like the east line could be perfectly straight if they weren't trying to cram a bunch of buildings and stuff in there. That's a lot of program.
Is that, at this point, if you don't feel, if you, you know, remember that we do call up when it's related to a code issue, if you disagree with a interpretation of the code, then right, then you decide if you want to do a call up.
Well, I look at that east line right there and the code, I think refers to topographical reasons or following a road. That does neither. That's following buildings. The east one.
Here, Dick?
The east line.
Oh, down.
You know.
That's the property boundary right there.
Yeah, so they're trying to get it right on the.
But they, they wouldn't leave a sliver of unsubdivided area next to their property line. I mean, you're, there, where those buildings sit are going to be regulated by our setbacks, not by, not by subdivision.
Right.
What I mean?
Right, is all this is doing is splitting this off from these two. This will all have to be, you know, go through development review, like Eric said, make sure there's setbacks. Eventually, some of this will then be subdivided off further into townhomes with individual, you know, like party walls between them. And then, you know, these condominiums could be split up too.
And Mark, going back to like the gold rush lots, I feel like with lot, lot two, it, it it appears that if we were to split that, or if they were to split that, we could have, they can keep all their programming that's in lot one, my one's a little fuzzy, while keeping straight, simple geometric shapes as a code states. I'm just bringing this up.
Yeah, I think the problem is we, we end up losing the better part of the wetlands, though. Because that, so that top line where the wetlands sit, that's going to have to move over to the left. That's the best part of the wetlands in there. If they're, if they're going to just carve that straight down to get their four acres or dedicate their four acres, we're going to lose some of the better wetlands to the, for the town. That'll then stay in, in, unveil's property.
Why couldn't they just realign it so they didn't cut out that and start even at the corner and then come, you know, ridiculously? I mean, I don't think we have to lose the best wetlands just because they realign that line.
I mean, come over here somewhere and cut it off down here.
Yeah. I'm just saying, I don't think that we're pigeonholed into losing the highest quality wetlands. But I guess I, the thing I'm stuck on is Mark, where you said this substantially complies with the code. And I just don't feel comfortable with that, with leaving it at, we're okay with substantially complying with the code. I think that's what makes me.
Cause it's, it, it really is an absolute policy that is not being adhered to. And I think that's just what I have trouble with is in a application of this magnitude, okay with not following the absolute policies. I just, that just makes me uncomfortable. But again, I'm the new guy. So I'm just wanting to vocalize it and see where.
If you guys want to call it up tonight, let's let staff know so that they can be here for it.
I think we should.
You want to go?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. And I would just say, the planning commission did discuss this at length, if you saw in the minutes there, and that that was, you know, they purposely put that condition in about substantially complies because both staff and planning commission had questions, but at the end of the day, they felt it was in the spirit of the master plan, it was the right thing to do. But totally respect your guys', you know, decision on this.
So is substantially complying means like that's something that we do? We say that other, like have we brought up other things across that we say, oh, well, this substantially complies. So that meets the absolute?
We, we took that, that that meant the absolute. Yes. Normally, we're not making that determination or a finding. We're, you know, we're normally just, the staff report says it complies or doesn't comply, and that's it.
Good, good. Okay.
Thanks.
Hold on it tonight. Anything else on planning? Or a couple of other things too. I actually asked Mark a question earlier about the Amaran House because I didn't remember us ever demoing anything, no matter what, but he said there was so little fabric that they didn't think it was worth, worth saving, so. There have been a lot of times, though, that we have had something that was moved from somewhere else. It was some honestly crappy borough barn that we insisted on saving and, but this has less fabric than that, so. All right, thanks, Mark. Okay, legislative review, parking code revisions. You're nuts.
Oh, sorry.
How are you?
Good, how are you? Are y'all staying dry? Kind of.
Stupid smell. Over it.
I'm Steffi. I'm here for the second reading of the parking code amendments. There have been no changes since your first hearing, which was on May 10th. This implements maximums and shared parking agreements to the parking code. So I'm happy to take any additional questions.
I did have a discussion with Julia about the maximums that I was talking about at the last meeting. And after talking through it and thinking about it, I, I think that just, it doesn't make sense. So I'm okay leaving it as is. Everybody else is all right with it.
Thanks.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
We have an ordinance amending jurisdiction of the liquor and marijuana licensing authority. This is second reading.
Mayor and council members, this is the second reading of an expansion of the jurisdiction of the licensing authority to process retail tobacco licenses. If you have any questions, let me know.
Questions? All right, thank you. And a reimbursement of workforce housing expenditures resolution.
Hello, good afternoon. So I think most of you may be aware that staff's been discussing a possible partnership with Summit County and CMC to build some more employee housing out on the CMC property. We're pretty early in the process of evaluating this, but there is the chance that after we see the plans, we will opt to fund a building with the county and the town sharing in the cost of that. And the CMC would actually do the construction management and everything. So, but in the event we do proceed, we would probably finance this with COPs, in which case, if we're going to invest any early expenses in the design, we'd want to be able to reimburse ourselves when we do get the COP. So this is just a reimbursement resolution. And if you have any questions.
If I could add to this, we're working feverishly on moving this because we have a very tight window. And we had a meeting last week and there was nothing with people from CMC and nothing that I heard that concerns me at all. I mean, I think that what they're proposing, what they're, how they're moving forward with Eagle is the Eagle Housing Authority, and none of it seemed concerning to Lori or I. I mean, we're talking a 35-year lease with their ability to buy back. If they want to buy it at any point, it would diminish 1/35th each year. You know, from the original price of what it costs, we have a first round refusal. Anybody that goes in would be, have our standard work requirement, even though some of them would be students. We, they do the standard work requirement. And yeah, I mean, I think it's a great opportunity. We will need to commit to some design dollars for setting up the second lot soon. So you know, I've spoken with the county and I think that we're both come cooperating in good faith until we get these formal MOUs that will pull the trigger and commit to splitting some early design costs so we can get this thing going. And we need to get that started potentially as early as this Friday. So there's a lot happening and it's a small, it's a window of opportunity that we want to jump on, I think.
Yeah, but taking advantage of the CMC contract and they're doing so many units across the state, the pricing is really compelling. And I think that's why we're so interested in doing it. I mean, these units could potentially be in the $300,000 a unit range as opposed to the 400,000 to 500,000 range that we're seeing. So that's why it's really interesting.
It's, it's great. And, you know, doing the math, it's about $333,000 a unit, which is incredible. And I understand the dire need for housing, like it's happened, the rush to get it in a sense of urgency. I guess the only question I have is the fact that we can't at this point make any changes. Does it comply with the sustainability and the and the trying to bring down our consumption, the pledge that we've taken for moving forward and the fact that this will be have none of that.
It's probably not going to be as green as what we're building.
It won't be green at all, though, right? Like there's, there's zero efforts at all to to conserve. And I know this is not a popular topic because we are in a crisis and we'd need housing right now, but I just wanted to bring that up and go and hey, like, is there any, there is no, they've presented, you know, and they presented to us when I was on planning. And they basically said, well, we'll listen to your suggestions, but we're not taking any of them because we don't have to. And just, which is, you know, that's a great place to be in, but just want to kind of bring it up.
I think until we get the drawings from the architect and engage the architect, we can't tell you how green or ungreen it is. And, you know, what we're asking at this point is to be able to start the process of working with the architect. And then we can always make a decision that it's not close enough. We, this isn't committing to the entire project.
Because.
Well, I think there are other options. It's not all or nothing. I think what we really need, like we keep coming to this, right? Every time we partner with the county, it's like, we're just going full bore. And so what I'd really like is similar to what we did with the parking structure, which is, yes, we were not required to offset our emissions for that. But we can require ourselves to hold true to that. So I really would love to see this program. We've sort of brainstormed it a little bit about how we're going to start investing in, you know, when you can't do onsite mitigation for energy use and sustainability. Then we need to have a program that we're right away moving forward with, not just keep saying, oh, we'll find another building to put solar on, like let's.
Kelly, like, like buying into a solar garden? Is that what you're referring?
I mean, I don't know. I feel like hopefully this is what's going to come out of Jesse's sustainability plan is, you know, a pathway for, I don't know if the solar garden is the right way to go, or whether it's better that we be putting.
Wind energy.
Yeah, exactly. Or what we should be doing. I, I don't know that pathway, but I think we just want to emphasize to that sustainability team that we'd like to have that looked into and sort of fleshed out so we can really start doing that.
And we did ask them, could we put solar on the roof? And they said, well, they think it might be oriented to accommodate that. So we are going to ask them to look at that and see if, you know, I mean, there'll be a premium, but we pay a premium for that. So, you know, it's important to the council.
But does this commit us? If we, if we buy in on this, do we leave, lose all leverage as far as to get them to, to not, not heat the place with coal?
It's a partnership.
You have an opportunity, but that opportunity comes at some, somewhat of a cost that Jay pointed out, that we have a window of opportunity that if we want to seize it, we can, I think, go out and rent another 48 bedrooms at a, probably a better cost than what we would build those 48 for ourselves because of what's been done so far and how we're doing it. You have to weigh how important that is to you. Is it worth doing it, knowing that they may not, they're not going to be as green as the ones are green at all? Although I would hope that insulation and windows and everything's a little better than what it's been in the past, that it is going to, you know, that there's a cost to that. Now, we can look at that, but in the, they may say it's, you know, you can only get X number of panels. It's not worth it. I don't know, but we'll try.
They're subject to our new code, though, right? Building code?
No, they're not subject to our code at all because they are a school.
Our building code is a school. I was thinking our development code, they weren't.
They go through the state.
Gotcha.
I think we have to seize the opportunity to get the bedrooms, but I also think it's an opportunity to do what Kelly just described because there's going to be more of these opportunities where we don't get to do what we want to do from a sustainability perspective. And maybe that launches that part of it, à la Gararage. And I'm sure there'll be other projects where like, oh, man, we'd like to do this.
And I just think, I mean, not only do we have a commitment for sustainability, but obviously the building community is watching what we're doing and we need to do right by that relationship as well.
I mean, since we're working in partnership with CMC, is it something, I mean, I'd be willing to pay more for the project if they don't have to, but just become transparent and clear that it is of value to us and see if they'd be willing as the primary client to push the architect to be more green.
Well, we'll sign the agreement. We've asked the architect to put together an agreement that we would sign with the county and we will, you know, when we, when we do that, we'll ask the architect to say, we really want you to look and see what you can do.
And if they don't, if they heat it by coal, can we back out?
Back out? Before you enter into a formal MOU, you will, this point, we're going to, we're going to spend some design money. That's our gamble.
I'm supportive of that.
They're going to heat it by coal.
It's the natural.
Because it's a total electric. Nobody's running gas. Nobody's running gas anywhere because of the gas situation, right? So it's total electric.
Good. Yeah. And then Excel will convert their whole, I mean.
Two points of clarification. On page two of the memo in section two, it references, we're going to borrow 11 mil and then in parentheses, it says 12.
Glad you caught that. I actually had written the note true. We'll need to modify the resolution because in section two, it's written 11, it should be 12.
Okay, cool. Awesome. Yeah, just so those tie, that'd be great. Thank you.
I guess when we approve this, if you approve this this evening, if you could just note that that section's changed.
It's the bigger one.
Yes, it's the, well.
1595, 1795.
And what happens at year 35 with the land lease? Can you just educate me on that?
To them. Versus to them.
Okay.
Structure.
Yeah, but the parking structure is like, yeah, with the 20-year option sure new.
He with a 20.
20. Jeffrey will be dead by then.
I might not make it through the meeting.
Pretty good with that? All right, public projects update.
When you're talking about the curb cut, I can't wait.
Speaking of money.
Hi, everyone.
Is the construction going to be over soon?
So. Yeah, Main Street got a little slowed down. We, we found some surprises and treasures under the asphalt on the current block, some utilities, some huge boulders. We had to rework the subgrade and then it snowed. Been a pave on Thursday. Best case scenario, move to the next block Friday. If Thursday goes slow, we'll finish the current block Friday and then wait till the holiday. If Thursday goes slow, we'll finish the current block Friday and then wait till the holiday after the holiday to move.
So the parade will go on?
The parade will be taking alternate route on Ridge Street.
You can go by your house. I love parades on Ridge Street.
Oh, yeah, I think it's awesome.
And so hopefully, everybody.
Nobody falls out.
So Peyton and Scott Jackman and Shannon Hanes and everyone worked really hard to reroute that parade and it's happening tomorrow, just not on Main Street.
This is always credit to our staff. Our staff always goes, I think, above and beyond to try to make things happen. Even when they get, you know, roadblocks, we barely say, no, sorry.
All seriousness, as a parent of a two seniors, um, I really appreciate it. I mean, I know how hard the staff works every year on this thing. This, this thing's never seems easy. So I do appreciate it.
Support everybody on Ridge. Okay, that was my only addition. I did have a decision for you to make on those delivery zones that we met on. Do you remember that fun meeting? Jeffrey missed it? On page thirty-five, I've summarized, well, um, what I believe was the direction we settled on. New delivery zones on Ski Hill and the Gold Pan Alley that will not have a time limit. A new delivery zone on the two hundred block at the Welcome Center has a ten AM time limit. And then we are going to keep the delivery zone in the Ice House Alley, but restrict deliveries after nine AM, so nine AM time limit.
It's going to take a lot of enforcement.
As you say.
Sure is.
I think we need to also really enforce behind the gold pan to make sure they're out of the alley. They're not blocking the alley because that'll be the easier place for them to stop.
And then they'll block traffic because we are going to go one way in Gold Pan on that section and put in that blue pedestrian zone. So they will completely block flow if they decide to unload in the alley there.
So we're not going to make any attempt to try to organize pedestrians through one hundred block.
No.
One hundred blocks out.
Be, um, you know, doing that improvement with the rec path against the river and then leading bikes behind the by building. So down where that connects behind the dumpster, we'll have that signed for bikes, but we weren't going to do anything for pedestrians in the alley right now. But the bike signage might draw more attention to that pathway and perhaps some pads will choose that route as well.
What if we signed it pedestrian also and just tried to make them go that way?
No one's going that fast on a bike through there.
It's just really narrow.
Well, the only one that's a wide bike is Kelly.
Everybody has that bike now.
You're saying, um.
Go ahead.
Sign for PEDs on that route two from the plaza?
Yeah, I mean, it's better than.
Conherent.
Yeah, it's better than going through the alley. Yeah, just to let them give it, give them that option is my suggestion.
What's the overall, I guess, strategy and vision for this living lab from, you know, what zones are we trying to hit? Is it just the hundred and, you know, the two one hundred blocks? And then, yeah, what are your thoughts on like timeline for, is this a year, is it five, is it six months? Yeah, what are we trying to, it'd be great to get us all kind of pulling in the same direction here as we
Yeah.
Make decisions and ask questions.
Right now, that's up to council how you want to proceed from a capital plan perspective. If we want to be more aggressive on design and move south quicker, we definitely can.
I would just. I think there's some things that we want to do and we're struggling with getting on the same page, which I understand because there's no great silver bullet that addresses some of these challenges over there. And so there's some things that we're doing and then we need to make some observations. You know, we need to get the whole parking structure, that pathway, the roundabout working the way it's supposed to be, we're completed and working and then we need to observe some act, you know, are we able to divert some people and get them out of a hundred north? You know, can we get them on this new pathway? And then what happens when they hit Ski Hill? Right? That's the key thing. And then where do they cross? And then how do we, you know, what's our success at looking at creating one-way directional through potentially through there, which we've had some conversations, but I don't have anything to report right yet to you. But there, I think there's a few things in the works that we need to kind of take a little farther. And uh, and have some other conversations. Uh, I'm struggling with this just like you because I'm trying to figure out how do we, we saw how difficult that was out there, right, for us to try to come up with. So we need to really sit down and work and maybe even get some more help in here and looking at what's right and what's doable. But there's a few outside factors that I think we need to exhaust before we go too far.
Is this a plan just for the summer or are we trying to do this for like a year to kind of see how it breathes and if we like it or not?
Summer operation.
Summer.
Cool.
Right now, at least this summer.
I also think we, we're at, at some point in the near future, we're going to have to embark on a dumpster plan. That's then gotta be the big step, you know, and, and it needs to include enlarging so that we can do more recyclables and composting and.
And use it to our advantage to help direct, you know, when we build it. Not, not, don't make it an impediment to where we want people to go, but use it as a tool to help guide people.
Yeah. Yeah, it does. And we're all going to need to accept the fact that we're going to have to go a little further. You know, we're going to have to have people haul trash for us. There's, there's many businesses that are already. But it, you know, they're not going to be right out your back door because we're not going to put them on the Riverwalk.
We're coming back to you here shortly.
For the trucks that are on the street and not on the Riverwalk.
I took your question, Todd, to mean, are we going to start looking at further south along the Riverwalk? Is that what you meant? Or did you mean the timing on these two blocks?
I, I think it's a, yeah, it's a loaded question. It's, it's, it's certainly in the short term, these two blocks, right? That's what you're working on. That's what you need some decisions on for the summer. But then longer term, and I don't know when the right time is from a staffing perspective. To me, I'd like to look at the whole river corridor and like, all right, what do we want to accomplish? You know, in my head, from patrol to four mile bridge, you know, and, and there are a bunch of different zones and it changes in different spots. So I'd love to have a vision that we're all aligned on, you know, and some of it may just be, hey, we're going to leave it alone, do nothing, and that's cool. But, you know, doing this, I think it'd be great to learn some stuff this summer. And personally, we'd love to even see, you know, maybe we do some experimentation with the pedestrian in the, the, the south one hundred block there, um, this summer, just to try and learn some stuff. But yeah, to me, it's more about a bigger vision for the whole corridor and what we're trying to accomplish together. Yeah, I think, I mean, I think a lot of the corridor, at least what we consider the Riverwalk proper from two hundred south, continuing south, the big problem and the hangup is the dumpsters. Once the dumpsters are gone and we figure out where to put those, the Riverwalk fixes itself. Then you got to start working with the merchants about having, having merchants back on the river, which is was originally in the code, what they're supposed to be doing, but very few of them do because there's so much other use that goes on back there that shouldn't. And the big culprit is trash because the trash trucks are on the Riverwalk. And then the stray person that doesn't understand what the Riverwalk is in their car.
I would, I, I, I would recommend to you that, I mean, I think that that sustainability and mobility are coming back to you with some, um, I met with them last week, they're putting together kind of an action plan. We have this whole issue of how we want to address commercial use and, and people paying into, to what they're doing and how we're addressing the true cost. And right now, you know, the town's eating a couple hundred thousand dollars on all this stuff. And we are going to be bringing that back in front of you and I think we need to expand upon that with a real plan of, uh, you know, designing these things. And we need to start then cherry picking and planning if it's two a year, whatever we're budgeting, especially as we this summer, what you'll start, for those of you that are new in the summer, we'll start coming to you uh, and putting together our five-year capital plan as one of the first things that we do is we start to look at our budgeting. But we'll start laying out, um, what we want to spend money on, what are those things that are important to you? What do you want to do year one, year two, year three going out? So I think things like this are important. I think when we're talking later about what if any funds are we going to put to expansion or remodeling of childcare facilities? Those are all things that we'll want to build into a CIP. What's the low hanging fruit we want to grab first? And so this is, this lights itself up with all this.
Yeah, but to, to Shannon's question, um, you know, looking at.
We get back to the original question.
No, but I just wanted to, to throw this out here because, you know, we're, we're, she, she, we, we are, she is spending a ton of money with this, like, doing this gold pan alley and doing a, a green strip that disappears once you cross Ski Hill. And because we want to see what happens, I think we've already seen what happens when there's, when there's no markers there. You know, people are going to walk down the aisle, six people wide, and there's maybe conflict. And so I would, I would like to recommend that we choose an option of, of action for Ice House of, of something so that we can observe a diff, something different happening. And it doesn't, it might not be the best case scenario because, you know, of trash enclosures or whatever it is. But, you know, if it's painting a green strip, you know, down one of the sides of the alley or just something different instead of moving deliveries with no consequence just to prove that nothing changes over the summer, I just, I don't feel good about that.
I'm with you on that. I'd like to learn. Yeah. Well, we argued about where to put the, the strip. And we never came to any consensus. I mean, I think we, I think to Jay's point, I think we should paint it on the backside of the buildings, even though it has to jog to go to the other side of the street, but there was no traction for that.
A strip's pretty affordable.
Yeah, more or less. It's just paint.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
But I was walking back there today and the, everybody that's at the, by the toy store, you know, that little parking space that doesn't have enough parking. Every one of those cars was hanging in the shero that's back there. You know, there's a shero part painted from last year and the cars are just hanging over onto it. So, you know, there's all those little, I mean, I don't disagree with you, Jay. The thing is, we couldn't come to an agreement with what to do, which is why we're not doing anything.
And, yeah, and to your point, I just, I find that unacceptable that just because we couldn't agree to something that we're not, they do anything. I would love to have this discussion when the, all seven, seven of us are sitting here looking at it after being on site and actually putting options on the table. Because like when we were doing it, you know, it, wind was blowing it like sixty miles an hour and, you know, one of us, someone, we're all shivering and, and we didn't know what the options were. So I'd love to lay down, okay, option one is no action in Ice House, right? Option two is a green stripe on the back of the building. Option three is a green stripe on the other side of the alley where the loading is right now. And do we have an option four or does that come something to that extent? And just do a quick vote and see if we can't find at least a majority on one of those, uh, um, hopefully two or three, just so that we can observe. If there is a green stripe, do people go on it? I don't know.
I'd love to see that, you know, with, with the options laid out from staff so that we can actually vote on one and go with it.
You're not going to come together again for three weeks, so, um, do you know enough now to spend a couple more minutes? And I mean, if we run through, so we're going to have an, I mean, the path that we're creating in one hundred north, right, is going to be nice and wide. And it's going to come up along the river between Schoonover and the river and hit.
That's the bike path.
That's bike, when we're not putting pedestrians there?
Pedestrians can choose to use it, but it's going to be signed for bikes. Pedestrians, we are signing to go in a blue lane, not green, okay, blue lane with bollards.
Next, next to the alley.
On the west side of the alley.
Why won't we put them together? I still don't really understand.
It was a decision we made with Norris, given the volumes we have and the sort of limited space for the rec path connection against the river and the advent of e-bikes, it was recommended to separate those uses. And we also observed that the pedestrians were sticking to the alley, period. You'll get some lollygaggers who go on the River Trail, but we observed that most of the pedestrians were straight lining down the alley.
And they wanted to make the, um, bike path super wide and if we were going to share that space, and that just seemed like.
And we would need to, you know, do the underpass at Watson to get that good width because we're going down to ten feet in some areas for that new rec path piece, which is pretty narrow. Fourteen would be your recommended minimum for a multi-use. And behind the blie building also, it gets like to eight.
Yeah, it's really small back there. That I know.
Well, that was part of it, but it was also the recommendation to separate modalities.
And that people are just going to be in the alleys anyway. Just can't.
I know, but see, what we're doing though is we're, we're allowing, what we, we're allowing pedestrians to do whatever they want. That's what's driving all our decisions. Pedestrians are going to walk there, so the hell with it. We're actually not going to do anything because, because pedestrians are going to walk wherever they want. We're not going to try to force them anywhere.
Have you seen that graphic where it's like?
Oh, I know. I had massive signs on our door during COVID that nobody read. I had signs that took up my entire front doors that people would not read.
And part of it also, Eric, was the narrowing of the alley so that the vehicles slow down. It's that psychological, um, piece.
Personally, I feel better getting pedestrians away from the alley than bicycles. We have a lot of pedestrians.
But Kelly has sort of pointed out, and she's probably not wrong, that people want to walk.
Close to the business?
They want to get.
They want to pop in and out.
Except none of these businesses have a, have a rear that is. There are no other than the mother loaded.
Well, peek-a-boo.
Peek-a-boo. Those are the only two, maybe, maybe Clint's has a back door, but there's not many.
Yeah.
I mean, the T-shirt shop is all blacked out.
I do think it's popular, it's used as a way to get off of Main Street too, which I think we should encourage. Like, when Main Street gets to be such gridlocked, that it's nice to have an alternate route.
That's how we got here.
Right.
You know, as, as we started talking about that.
Side has like bollards separating the pedestrian piece. Could we pick a side in the alley and I don't care which side and do the same on the other side and, and just pick one and learn this?
Were the problem, right?
I don't think you need the bollards.
I think we can't do the bollards because of the trash.
Just do it as a learning thing this summer. I don't think we should spend the money on the bollards. How much that costs? Just blue strip.
In the Ice House, we may have already ordered bollards. I have to check. I say, here's my proposal. We'll do bollards in blue per design in Gold Pan. We will do a blue path combined with a delivery zone in Ice House since we're kicking the trucks out at nine AM anyway.
On the west side of the alley?
Yeah. I'd sort of a hybrid per design, but keep the delivery zone also pre-nine AM. And then we can not do the bollards because the trucks will crush the bollards. And then we can observe if anyone even tries to follow that pedestrian path.
I'd be in favor of that.
That sounds good.
At least there's a purpose in getting the delivery trucks out.
That's exactly it. Otherwise, there's just no, why?
It's out of there because pedestrians need to walk there.
Yeah.
No, I, I think your, I think your chances of keeping them along that edge is lessened with no bollards.
Are there any, any sort of like, you know, those little things that they're like a narrow
Yeah.
Tube that goes up, that's not permanent, kind of.
That's what we're looking at.
That's what you're calling the bollards?
Yeah, they're not concreted. They're, they're just those.
They're not at huge expense.
No, not at all. And they would go away in the winter.
That was one of the things we talked about that morning is we removed the delivery and put it over on Ski Hill and Main. Then I think this would have a far better chance of working.
That would be per the original plan.
Yeah.
Correct. That would be option two. So option one, hybrid. Option two, be per plan, move the delivery zone.
But we still have the trash trucks who are going to drive through.
Yeah, like we saw that one when we were standing out there. Yep.
But they won't drive over the bollards. They would have.
That's what you think.
Have you seen those guys?
I don't, I don't like the delivery guys having across the street. I think that's, I think that's an issue.
So is there a reason that we couldn't put the number two delivery zone on the block next to the Bly building? I know we can't put it up closer. But it seems like we could move it directly across the street and it would be the same amount of traffic congestion.
Line of sight to the hole in at Bly.
You talking on ski hill?
Yeah.
Kelly?
I think it's a line of sight thing.
I gotcha.
Yeah.
What a mess.
What a mess.
Nobody.
Obviously.
If we, if we can. Life, what's the life left in Schoonover?
What time is it?
Why don't we turn that thing down?
Well, you know, really, it's part of face. If if we do a phase three, remember? The different bridge coming from the structure over and then it was the demolition of Schoonover. I mean, Schoonover can come down at any point. Um, but we want to have a plan for what we're doing there, I think, when we yank it down, so.
We still have housing in there?
But, you know, by this time, we're not obviously doing anything this year, and by this time next year, we'll we'll be in a better position. To lose its four units. I would be in a better position to lose those units, so. And so I would say if we could come up with a plan, the earliest we would probably want to do anything would be next, next year, but.
I kind of like the. Deliveries till nine, just because it still provides the delivery trucks with an easy option to unload everything. And then it really punishes them for not getting there by nine AM, and then they have to go across the street all the way. And then it's like, by the end of this summer, either we'll know that they really make every effort to get there before nine so that they can be up close. Or they don't really care and they cross that road without. Any problem anyway.
With the added enforcement, are we gonna do any sort of fine structure?
Oh, we already have a fine structure for.
This can't just be Breck Park, though. This has got to be BPD enforcing this.
Barrett said he'd take care of it.
I mean, it's gotta be a police thing. We can't, you can't have the, the dudes that work for Brett Park out there arguing with the delivery drivers who I argue with on a daily basis. And they don't seem to care. Maybe I should get a gun and a badge.
Well, we'll use our CSOs to help with that, so.
Yeah.
Do we need to look at flipping the pedestrian to as you suggested?
I still think the pedestrian belongs next to the buildings and not against the delivery.
I spent like an hour or so back there after we met that night and everybody was walking along the back of the buildings and I'm sure you've got thirty thousand hours of seeing that.
But then you could never have the bollards because of the parking spaces. Like if, if this works out and we choose, you know, and. We want to proceed with it.
You could have some bollards.
Yeah, what, why couldn't you have a ball?
You have all the parking spots.
Parking back there.
Yeah.
You could have a few.
Even a few gives you a visual path.
That will be difficult to have the drive lane, the delivery zone and the walking path. And two-way traffic. All those don't fit. I don't disagree in the final solution, if we were to go to, you know, like pavers or concrete or something for the pedestrian path other than bollards and paint. That we would go against the building, but for the temp condition, we can't fit those three things.
We can't be, if we get an agreement with Bly to go one way.
If we can one-way it.
We weren't, when we talked to him, he wasn't against it, so I feel like we need to reach out and say.
Let me just give you a little more time.
This needs, you know, we just need a little more time.
We don't have to, we could phase this. I can go in and do gold pan first and then we can add in Ice House after.
Okay, do this from the next meeting in three weeks. Come back with. The thing and then we'll vote on it. You guys all right with that? Or do you feel like you need to vote on it tonight?
I thought that's what we were hearing from Shannon, that tonight's gonna be much better. Three weeks will be well into June, right?
Yeah.
It'll be snowing, though.
I mean, if more time allows for the potential for one way, I would wait three weeks to see if that's an option.
Is that part of the wait is negotiating?
Will we be able to have an answer within three weeks?
Yeah. Yeah.
I think we vote now with, hey, if we get approval from Bly for one way, we go one way. Or the other, and then she's got a decision and can march.
Yeah, I mean, right now, what we know while putting the pedestrian path. Closer to the building is a better permanent solution. We're talking about keeping it on the west side of the alley in the delivery area that goes away at nine o'clock. And using coloring to show the path and see what, if anything, that has. Impacts on people and try to keep the bikes crossing and over on the other pathway.
Yep, so that's the hybrid, which became option one, combining the two. Option two would be per plan, delete the delivery zone. Do you guys want to vote?
Hold on, we have, we have as it is now with nothing. That's really option one. Don't do any change, right? And number two is as presented here.
That's the hybrid?
This is really just.
But also with the blue walking.
No, no, hold on. We're gonna, we're gonna have multiple options, so remember these. Well, we have to because otherwise, you know, I mean.
Mark it down.
Yeah. Number two is as presented on the plan here in front of you. Number three is this with pedestrians against the building.
What'd you say, with dead streams? What'd you say?
Pedestrians against, no dead stream.
Have a one-way.
It don't work. We don't know if it'll work, Eric.
You know, most people go one way in that alley anyway.
I'm well aware. However, there's this liability thing we have as a government.
Well, so then, so then, so then either the pedestrians go in the current delivery zone and that, or that, or there's nothing.
Hybrid, right?
That's true.
Option one, no action. Option two, per memo.
As presented.
As presented.
Which is basically no action as well, right? Just moving delivery jokes.
I'm that boy.
Nine AM.
The blue strip.
That's not yet.
As presented plus blue stripe.
Okay.
Right.
On the west.
On the west, in the delivery zone.
Is there an option for?
No.
You've been very quiet on this. Do you have one?
No, I don't want to, I don't want to muddy the waters.
Four B, removing all, would would an option four be removing all deliveries from the Ice House and and doing blue line and bollards?
As planned, is what that would be.
That'd be option four, sure, per original plan.
Per original.
Where we are.
For Norris' plan.
Oh, Lord.
Oh, God.
Let's vote.
Let's vote.
What's option four?
Who runs votes, Eric?
No deliveries.
No deliveries at all.
Everything.
Everything else the same, so.
Blue strip, bollards, no deliveries in Ice House.
The problem is that that makes, that is a huge problem for everybody that's down in this area.
Businesses.
Businesses. Who votes for as it is right now with no change? Okay, then as it is on in front of you right now, anyone? Then.
Option three?
Option three is as it is with a blue stripe in the delivery zone, no deliveries after nine.
With heavy enforcement.
Yeah.
Police enforcement.
Yeah.
I think we should deputize Jim to Rodney Kingdom.
You can't say that.
Too soon, too soon.
So three it is.
Three it is.
All right.
Aggressive.
Thank you, Shannon.
Thank you.
See, you know, it's amazing what can happen when the wind's not blowing.
Everybody's bikes not falling down.
Um, do you have questions on any other projects that are not?
I have a comment. On the, um, the Coin Valley presentation from the contractor and that little slidey thing that shows what, fantastic.
They are great.
That is awesome. So thank you for that.
We're really impressed with Ron, how we've never worked with them before, but we're doing great so far.
Um, so just, just in case you're. Matt's not here for mobility. Um, the, so far, they've started the dogs on buses and getting a lot of great feedback and. And no problems with it. We are moving forward with allowing Brett Crate to. Do a rap on one bus for the, whatever that musician on bus program thing we're doing, okay? Just so there's no surprises. Typically, we don't allow. Mobile billboards, but we are gonna do it on this one. For one thing. The substantially complies.
Partially composed.
We're working feverishly to substantially comply.
Any other questions on anything to do with mobility or any of Shannon's public projects?
No, where the path is going to go when it comes to.
Right there, coming up out behind, uh, you know, the ski rental place, it'll come up next to the willows and.
So is on Dave's place, does it go behind it or in front of it?
In their piece of land.
That will come up.
Behind ski country?
Yeah.
Yes.
I'm talking to them right now and we want to do a small encroachment onto their parcel. As they are also encroaching on our land, so I'm just waiting to hear it back from Jenny and Dave on that. To get a resolution.
For having the conversation. Not that I put you on the spot. A revised schedule on the overlayment, the asphalt, are we, when do we get off of Main Street as of, we're, if we.
Next Friday, we're hoping to pave out the Ski Hill block Thursday. If we complete it Thursday, we'll move Friday and start removals, Washington to Adams on Friday. We might still be paving on Friday and then we would move to the next block Tuesday, but we will be done by next Friday. Barring any further natural disasters, plant closure, anything like that. So June third, we should be out of Main Street.
Brock.
This year.
We expecting boulders in. We expecting boulders in the rest of Main Street?
I'm hoping the subgrade is in better shape moving along. Fewer surprises.
You would not believe the amount of water I'm getting into my building because there's no pavement on Main Street. Really crazy.
Goes underneath.
We have a, we have a hole in the, yeah, we, well, we have a hole with zump pump that has run nonstop since we pulled the pavement out. Crazy? Yeah, because it doesn't deflect it into this storm.
Um, I'm gonna get us back on track.
Oh, you're not. No, because we're gonna talk about the McCain.
We'll be doing, we'll be doing a lot of, uh, we'll be doing a much bigger childcare discussion here later in the agenda, so in the. Housing and childcare update, we just had the minutes from the May tenth meeting. So if you have any questions, we can have staff address them, otherwise.
Rick, when are we gonna talk about the McCain bike path?
We had some good feedback from BOSAC as part of the open house last night and, uh, I think we want to jump into it now. I'm trying, Scott, did we have a plan for when to bring that thing forward or? We kind of wanted to assemble some of the information.
Uh, we synthesized, good afternoon, we synthesized, synthesized the information from last night and just got kind of a general feedback of what people had said. Um, we were going to, um, basically, we provided to you all the map and kind of description today, um, but the feedback wise was. Very strongly, um, for keeping both paths and very strongly for paving. There were one or two that were opposed. To the concept and one or two that were opposed to having it paved. So it was, I, on the count in front of me, but it was like. Twelve to one, eighteen to one, that kind of, that kind of count, so.
I would still like to have a discussion here because I, Kelly and I have talked about it. I'm opposed to both. So I would like to have a discussion about.
Right.
Point, and we got other shit to do tonight, so not tonight.
I.
We, uh, from a timing perspective, I don't think it's critical. We can get it on that, do it as a work session discussion at the next meeting, I believe. Oh, I think it's a fairly full meeting. I can't remember, but we'll try to squeeze it in. If we end up with, depending on how this goes, if we end up with any time at the end of the work session, we can start some discussion, but otherwise we'll try to get it on. Full agenda.
Thanks.
And we're looking at that, can we add in if there's any other possible? Trail components to being around Alta Verde? That would be phenomenal to understand if, hey, is it just these two and that's it? Or are there going to be other opportunities for the folks that live there to have a place to walk the dog, go out with the kids, that kind of thing?
So there were two, essentially two sessions or two pieces of feedback that we sought. One was specific to the rec path and that was the second one. The first one was about the six to eight acre parcel, um, that exists that, you know, the open space purchase. And kind of what the visioning was for that, what what people prefer, whether it be a natural area, whether it be trail-based recreation. Um, or kind of park space, those were kind of the three options and then other. Um, happy to bring that back, there's that information as well, maybe more again synthesized information so you can see what people said. Once again, it's a snapshot of the people that were in the room. It's not a, not a poll, if you will, um, but it does give some feedback on that. We can, we can bring those results to you as well.
And we also followed up with, uh, Gorman, who's developing that to see what if any concerns they had about a paved path that could. Potentially generate higher amounts of traffic that close to the building, so.
Yeah, appreciate that because I think it's all about kind of what that whole picture looks like in that, that ecosystem there. So thanks.
Thanks, Scott. All right, there are no committee reports, uh, financials?
Uh, Dave, can you come down for me? I'm not gonna have Dave present this because he's still just kind of getting his feet under him, but, uh, it's also.
Can do it.
A good opportunity as we're looking, I apologize, I just lost my place on here. One of the things I think as, as, uh, Dave and I have talked about as he starts to. Understand this a little more and start, you know, looking at his priority list of what he's addressing is. He has some ideas on how he might want to generate a little different monthly report for the council, I think. So I think it might, if you had thoughts on what's important for you to see and and share that with him. Um, you know, then he'll keep that in mind as we're going there. For me, looking at where we're at. We have, we, we never really look at our expenditures because our expenditures don't. You know, they're always on, they're always under where they need to be ninety percent of the time out there. Uh, but we, we track the sales tax, right? We look at that net taxable spend. We look at, that gives us a picture of what the activity we're seeing in town. I don't know if you find each of those categories helpful when you're looking at restaurant and retail and construction and. Grocery and those types of things. And so we have that model, which, uh, but then there's, you know, a lot of other things that have kind of gone the way on there that we never seem to talk a lot about.
What does everybody think they want to see if he's gonna generate something different?
Or if you don't know what you want to see, we'll come to you with some ideas and you can just talk about it.
I think the categories of sales tax are very important.
Yeah.
Just so we know, you know, where our revenue is coming from and if if something's underperforming, we can talk about why and how we can fix it. Um, I think I'd, I'd like at least a variance report on the expense side, you know, in terms of. You know, is something way out of whack upward, down, because, you know, down might mean we're way understaffed or some, you know, we might need to act on it. From a different standpoint, so.
Okay.
That's probably the two biggies for me, I, you know. Probably not every month, but quarterly or something, kind of how we're doing on capital projects and that kind of thing on CIP.
Well, I do like the tax due by industry too.
Okay.
I like that, that just that one snapshot.
Gotcha.
Without getting too simplistic, um, just from comfort, being comfortable, like to say P and L. With, you know, where we are versus budget, uh, year to date. And total for the, for the year where we're at.
So a projection to the.
Yeah, just a, just a very standard, yeah, that'd be, thank you.
I think it's perfect as is.
He's just finally figured out how to read it.
After six years.
Six.
I'd love to see, um, detail on the, the, the HR side of things from, uh, yeah, how we're doing as far as expenditures. When it comes to staffing and then if it wouldn't be too difficult, and I don't know if I see Dana in here or not, but I'd love to see. How we're doing with total headcount and unfilled headcount, just so we can kind of keep an eye on.
Town of Breck Staff.
Town of Breck Staffing, yeah, just want to make sure we're, we're staffed up. That's, I, I think, important. Town of Breck staffing. Yeah, just want to make sure we're, we're staffed up. That's I, I think important here going forward.
A report for a different department, but we can see about maybe getting in front of you with more reporting in that vein, especially in this climate.
Something simple that's not a headache to put together would be great, but just some insight into that would be amazing.
It's not Dave's wheelhouse. He just started, now you're heaping on a whole other department.
But the months were strong.
Yeah, yes.
The year.
Important part.
Just a quick peek for April. It looks like it's strong when we come back a month from now. So it looks good.
Awesome.
Yeah. Remind you that April is really up through March, right? We knew March was going to be a big one and it, it didn't disappoint. So. Very strong month for us.
Any other questions for Dave? Anything else you want to see in the report? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, STR zoning follow-up discussion.
Hey, Todd, I would, I'm gonna make a note to follow, I'll follow up with staff on that. How would you guys feel about instead of trying to come in on a monthly basis and produce? Maybe quarterly we check in with our.
We're gonna say that.
Kind of our staffing, where we're at from a staffing perspective. Okay?
That would be amazing. Yeah. And I certainly don't want to have it be a burden or a headache, but just a little snapshot to be like, hey, we doing okay here? Just don't want to go backwards.
Let us look at it because we, you know, it might help to line it up with our seasonals and how we do our seasonal recruitment hiring.
As her setting up, we're gonna just take a quick five minute break.
Good. Into the first 30 minutes of everything.
Did you read his explanation then?
Yeah.
They got to reminisce some? Where's number eight, Jeff? Where's number eight?
Oh.
I always run back because I don't want you to announce.
Causing more trouble and being late all the time.
Oh, here.
We are gonna move on to the STR zoning follow-up discussion. Mark?
Thanks, Eric. Continuation or discussion from a couple of weeks ago and also we had the Eric and I and we were meeting with a bunch of realtors at lunch today to talk about this. So anyway.
Very nice.
They were. Yeah. So, yeah, it was a good discussion. So we've provided a couple more pieces of information for you that you requested. One had to do with the number of exempt lockoff units. So that, the table on page three basically indicates that. And in addition to that table, there are additional units associated with the BGB projects. So we get to a total of 2,104 separate keys. Essentially for all the other exempt properties, the amount of units we had, total STR license, those included all lockoffs. With BGB, it didn't. So now it adds a couple of hundred to that total.
So everyone else counted as keys, but BGB counted as units?
Yeah. And that was, you know, Bella can probably explain a little more on that, but that was how that was worked out with them in terms of if they had a, a unit that had, some of them have two, three lockoffs, it all discounted as one unit for purposes of licensing.
Financially, we're charging per bedroom. So the only difference is if we were charging a license for each lockoff, then we would get that extra bolt fee for each lockoff, correct? Which is what, 75 or a hundred bucks or something?
Well, especially if it's a one bedroom, it's the minimum.
I think the bigger question is how are those being used? So if it's a, say it's a, something that's got two, two lockoffs, who, who's using those properties? Are they being used as STRs or are they being used by owners?
No, they use it as STRs. Well, I mean.
Either only about 50% or they throw, you know, of their owners actually put their units into rental pool. Fifty.
Oh, how?
Most of the, they say most of the owners actually use the property, the majority, and mighty, they may even say 60.
Thirty percent is what he said.
Was anecdotal or is there?
They say that they have good data. The challenge is you don't actually own a unit. You own the use of a unit, even though you get a deed at piece of property. So they can't, you know, say my unit never gets rented because there is no my unit, right? You show up for a week, you could be here or you could be here.
In a similar unit.
Do you want to just shove that for now and go through the rest of this? Because you're the one that asked for it.
The STR thing, yeah. Well, I mean, I'm still a little unclear whether they actually sell those lockoffs individually or they only sell units as a whole.
Can you guys hear me? Okay. So this is all, it's, it's not data that it's measured, but just from looking at how deeds are, are being transferred, they come in a lot of different shapes and forms. In, in a lot of ways, I think that the, the fact that the units can be subdivided into like any, anywhere from a suite, which is technically a studio, all the way to a four bedroom. It gives a different opportunities when you go to sell the timeshare. You can give people different options of them either purchasing the entire thing or purchasing, purchasing the very small thing. But then you can, when you go to rent it, you can upgrade and pay a little bit extra and get another bedroom. And it's already locked off and it's attached to you. So you can bring your mom and dad with you. So it's, it's more, it's a very good way from a sales point of view because you can, you can sell one product in a, in a lot of different formations. So we see, when we see deed transfers, to just answer the que, the question, how do they get sold? You see different combinations of, of people either buying the whole thing or people just buying a portion, whatever they were able to afford at the time and what they, what fit their family needs.
So to ask the question differently in any given week, so say when BGB, because they're the primary company that does this or, or any kind of fractional ownership company comes and they come through the development process and they say, this project is 140 units. In any given week, could there be more than 140 deeds on, on this property being sold?
I don't think so. No.
That's what I'm trying to get my head around.
Right.
Okay. So they're, they're still selling them intact, but they, the use is where it becomes configured many different ways.
Yeah. And, and those, the newer ones are just, their schedules are issued differently. They actually have separate scheduled numbers for every one of those bedrooms. So technically it's a, almost scheduled per bedroom. So then when you purchase a four bedroom unit, you have four schedules.
Maybe you are buying four deeds.
That's what I'm wondering. So you could sell it separately. I, you know, I don't know that we need to know the answer to that right now, but I think we, we need to dive in on this question a little deeper. You know, when, when going through a development process with anyone, you know, I think it's very important. We know how many deeds, how many pieces of property could potentially be sold out of this development? And I, I'm still, you know, I don't know that we, we are totally clear on it still.
And.
And I, Bella, you've done a great job getting all this data, but you know, I think some of it's a bit elusive and I think we need to, to really have it.
And I don't just, what comes to my head now, it's probably a good idea for us to reach out to BGB and see if they can, because I, I'm, what I'm sharing is what I've seen on our side of things when it comes down to licensing and deed transfers, but I may be making assumptions there that may not necessarily be correct. It's just how I understand it.
Sure. Yeah. And the assessor could probably clear it up as well, some too. But you know, again, I, I don't know if it's pertinent to tonight's discussion as much as it is during a development process. No, thank you. But I, I think knowing how many lockoffs is very pertinent to tonight because that's how many individual could potentially be rented.
Okay, thank you. Um, yeah. And the, the other thing you guys were looking for is more details on amenities in space, general commercial conference. That took a wild pull together. Thanks to Sarah for diligence on this one. We really, our files are incomplete, you know, it, it's, it may be there, but it's, was going to take a huge deep dive through paper files. We found what we could, but really this table that you received an earlier draft this morning and because Sarah's working up until this afternoon on this, really outlines the square footage on each of the exempt properties in terms of, you know, first residential, then amenity space, conference space, commercial. And then what we're calling told the resort, which is a combination of those three amenities, conference and commercial. And then we also identified if it has a shutter or not. As you can see, as you look through here, there's a significant, you know, amount of amenity space provided in many of these exempt properties compared to what you might see out there on other properties. So the information that we compiled was largely based on input from the resorts themselves. They provided us this information. You know, Sarah took a look at several of them that we did have data on and they look pretty similar like Beaver Run. So I think it's reasonably reliable what you're seeing here on, on this data. And I know this was part of the discussion regarding exempt, non-exempt, or if we created some other label to, you know, for these type of properties. So we can answer more questions on that if you want now or later, but maybe I'll just keep moving and then.
Yeah, just keep moving and we'll.
Yeah. Then we provided the table that really shows a change in licensing from 2012 to 2022. So hopefully that was helpful to you guys. It's like a thousand additional units in the, the last 10 years. So you can see how that played out. And then finally regarding the tourism overlay district map, I, sorry, I didn't get this to you earlier, but this table that we did send out to you today is a good like little highlight for the different land use districts and it has those key buzzwords that we've been talking about, like bed base, close to the ski area, lodging, and then it also has densities, units per acres. If you guys decide to go down the path of basing the, like say zone one or all the zones on land use districts, then this can be helpful, I think with that. You know, some of the things I pointed out in the memoir, you know, a lot of these districts that are up on the screen here, which are the ones we've looked at before that are highlighted in the kind of maroon color there. They have the higher densities, 15 units or greater per acre. Most of them talk about either bed base or lodging. Pretty much all of them say one or the two of those words in the description. There's no one that just fits perfectly with all those. But that's there for your consideration. We do have in kind of an outlier, Land Use District 28 there to the west. It's kind of, it's partly on the town's property, the ice arena, but then it goes across the street, but really that's more lower density in there. But it, it did, the land use designation contemplated lodging there.
So Main Street Station, Main Street.
No, Main Street Junction is right to the left of there, Dick.
That's the stuff.
It's Breck Mountain Village.
Mountain Village, yeah. A snowshoe construction.
And it's also sunbeam partially.
Dick, it was Jablonski's stuff is what it was.
Gotcha.
Partially sunbeam as well.
Right.
There's a couple. There's a couple of other districts that include that lodging moniker. Brad, if you can back it up a little, you'll see Land Use District 11 includes that up to the north. And that's really North Main Street. So it's, there's really not much, any of that going on up there. And then Land Use District 6, which is the district way up north, that includes the Ranahan, Welk, Marriott Resort area there in the red. So that has a lodging thing also. So if you did want to use lodging, one of these higher density targets to kind of define these areas, you may want to put some geographic limitations on it as well, you know, like west of Main Street or something like that. The one other thing I wanted to point out back down to downtown is that the one. Um, the one other thing I wanted to point out, um, back down to downtown is that the one area. And, you know, so we certainly started looking at this, um, these areas when the overlay task force first met. But one of the things we tripped across right away is Main Street Station is excluded from this. And that's that area, um, right, right up there, where you can see like the Hyatt, yeah, right in there. So that's actually in land use district nineteen. So that kind of started us on the path, I think, with the overlay district of starting to, you know, adjust this beyond the boundaries of just land use districts for better or worse. And then we made some other tweaks as we went, as, as you've seen, like to pull Gold Camp out. And, um, now there's a couple of other things we did as well. But, um, if we back off and just take a look at land use district ten a little more, that area up there, um, is designated for lower density. It's two to four units per acre. And it's also, when you look at the description in the table, it talks about being intended for permanent residents. So it's in, in contrast to the other zones that are definitely intended to be bed base for the ski area. So that may be something you want to look at as well. So with that, I don't have anything more to present to you at this time. We're here to answer questions, to help out you out wherever we can. Now we've got a lot of things to discuss.
Thanks, Mark. Where would you like to start? So we have a couple of things we need to talk about. We need to talk about, and, and tonight, we're just gonna give staff some guidance again. We're not gonna write the code. They're gonna write what we're gonna do. But I think we need to get to hopefully a couple of answers. Number one, what are we gonna do with the exempt properties? Number two, is it three overlay districts or is it two? Number three, is it, are we gonna go with what the overlay committee has suggested here? Are we gonna go by land use districts? I understand why the overlay district did what they, or the committee did what they did. But some of them are splitting land use districts. So I think those are just a couple of the things that we need to sort of answer tonight if we can.
It may be a three A where we added a few more criteria around land use districts where we could use that solely. Like UPA, like units per acre.
Sure, sure. I, those still fall into that general classification of, um, you know, you could either do the ones that we've pointed out that have some kind of access to ski areas and then anything over fifteen UPA, um, west of the highway. Anything you'd want to do like that, yeah. So let's first talk about the exempt category. Because that will set up a lot of the other discussion as far as, and the, the question is, do we just blend the exempt category into overlay district one? Or do we keep them on their own with different criteria to leave them on their own? And that criteria would be, um, something around the, the sheet we have with amenity space shuttles, things that make them more hotel, um, in nature. And that's not to say that those would be at a hundred percent, because they're not at a hundred percent right now. They're at like ninety-seven percent. If you wanted to stick, or ninety-three percent, if you wanted to stick with something like STR saturation, which is sort of, where, where some of the overlay districts have, um, have gone, so. That sounds where we want to go.
I like, if you're gonna look and have a discussion relative to what we might call exempt. Remind you, there's sixteen properties, uh, several of those properties are lumped together under the village, right? So we look at the village, which encompasses at least what, three or four? Sixteen. Is that it's, you know, that the criteria is something that's not easily replicated. I mean, when we look at like a total, must have a total resort area square footage, the, you know, greater than six thousand square feet. Not anybody can just go add six thousand square feet to their condominium building to try to get an exempt status.
Let me, let me ask a question about that real quick. Valdoro Mountain Lodge, there are no onsite rentals. Do they have no STRs?
So the, I talked with the GM earlier today. Uh, you can't go to Valdoro and walk up to the front desk and say, I want a room tonight. Which is a difference between that property and some of the other timeshare properties where you can do that.
So do they buy STRs?
They do buy STRs and she says they're not supposed to, but some of their owners do put their weeks on like Airbnb for rental. But they try to not allow that. Um, and Bella and I looked earlier and we did see some on there for rent. Um, so they do have licenses for each property.
And then the other question is, what, for the Main Street Station properties, there's a bunch of blanks. Do we?
Um, we didn't get responses from.
They're not very responsive and getting back to us, so we thinking we could just do away with them as exempt? I might get their attention.
Okay. Thoughts? Discussion?
This district, did you say Main Street Station was in?
It's in nineteen J. It takes all of Main Street.
And it talks about, i- in the logs for nineteen, it says that commercial uses with residential secondary uses are also acceptable. So would that be, could that be argued to be a, a zone? Uh, that would be, that would be adhering to STRs?
Well, that wording is not very strong compared to the other ones, you know, where it talks about multifamily residential, that type of thing. But, I mean, you could make that interpretation, I guess.
It is twenty UPA also, so it's over the fifteen UPA that Mark has been suggesting.
Correct.
I was just, not to, not to change the order of operations, but just looking at it, that if, if there was a way, trying to organize my thoughts and to say this is articulately, as articulately as I can, easy to say. If there is a way to not call out specific properties or even locations and just to use the, the zoning, the lugs, then I think that provides us with the strongest backing, makes Kirsten's job the easiest possible. Um, and I think it's the most objective quantitative way to proceed forward. And so if we can say that, yes, you know, Main Street Station, uh, falls into nineteen, and nineteen wi- with the commercial activities and secondary uses of, um, residential and the, um, the high UPAs, then I, I would really like to, to keep going down that path, exploring that way, because it provides us with the most legitimate path forward. And I don't know if, um, I, I would just like to explore that as much as possible as it, it does provide, um, the, the path of least resistance, uh, of not trying to figure out what criterias we can do uh, for exempt that can't be skirted when there, there's always, you know, wherever you, you know, you, you plug your finger into one hole and it's saying come out the other, right? And so just trying to figure out what the best blanket way of doing this, where we don't have to set criteria for exempt or not exempt, that it's, it already says it and to move forward that way. That'd be my preference to, to keep on investigating that way.
I, you know, Jay, I don't disagree with you conceptually, but I think in practice, and I'm not trying to exclude people, I'm trying to, to, um, treat a, a, a classification or a group of resorts that have made significant investments in amenity space and, and really numerous other things, the shuttles, I mean, we see the list, um, to act, you know, like a convention center or act like a hotel. And, um, and I think they bring a, a different level of service to our guests in town. And I think with that, they, they have some needs.
But that, but don't those places you're referring to, Dick, don't they come under the, the overview of the lugs? Don't they, don't the lug suggest that that's kind of a bed base for, for ski?
Yeah, but you know, I think they have additional needs than just regular old, um, group one, you know.
Here, here's a, just mathematically, if you pull all the exempt units out of overlay number one, the saturation in number one goes from seventy-five percent down to sixty-seven percent. So remove the hotels, everything that's left, sixty-seven percent of those properties have, have SDR licenses. So it changes the math on, because those properties are ninety-three and above. So if you were to say, just theoretically, right? Theoretically, you say, um, number one, we stick to the, whatever that number is, that, you know, twenty-two hundred, plus the exempt or minus the exempt, whatever you think. And then you took the res- resorts and you said their saturation has to be a ninety-three percent. So you can only get a license if it is below that. Zone one, then, so you set it at seventy percent. You either include zone two in that zone one, or you can leave it as it is at fifty percent. And then whatever you decide the saturation for that overlay three is. Saturation is not the word anybody's used except for me, so I bet, don't.
I still think we need a gross number of units as a cap.
Right, so you're thinking twenty-two plus and that's, that's it? Or is it twenty-two if you remove the resort?
I'm thinking twenty-two if we remove the resort. Yeah, I mean, with that, where we moved prior, where we came up with the twenty-two.
Correct.
But I don't want to just go on, we can use percentages as guidelines, but I still think we need a hard number for the cap to accomplish the twenty-two.
Well, I think that's, I think by using the two of those, that's how you can get to the number of licenses that are available.
I think the difficulty with removing, with treating all of the units, you know, the previously exempt and the ones that are within the land use guidelines in zone one, the same, is that it sort of gets away from like the values that we came here for, which was to preserve local housing and to, you know, minimize impacts to neighborhoods or traditionally more local housing units. And it treats them all the same, whereas these units that have previously been exempted or at like ninety-three percent, um, short-term rentals or lodging type facilities. And then there's others in zone one that are only, you know, forty or twenty percent. And I just don't, I feel like treating them all the same so that all the licenses are up for grabs just doesn't really make sense. To me, it, it really does make sense that there are some of these facilities that were designed and have been utilized as, um, short-term rentals. And I mean, you know, part of that is, a huge part of that for me is shuttle service. And I feel like that's something that we really need to talk about being part of.
I think we require it.
Yeah, because that's a big, that really reduces the congestion in town too. So, I mean, I think there are, if we can put some requirements that help reduce the impact to neighbors and, um, congestion in town, vehicle trips, that, those kind of impacts, then it makes sense to have some facilities with, I don't like to use the term exempt, but with higher saturation of licenses.
Yeah. I want to lose the word exempt. That's a terrible word.
Is the hotel Breck Ridge, do they have STRs? Then it was just a hotel. What was that?
It's the Marriott.
Hotel Breck Ridge is the.
The Mountain Valley Lodge, there's timeshares. They are licensed for a unit as well.
So Kelly, you're saying keep trying to do the, whatever we could to keep the percentage same or slightly reduced in each case?
No, I guess what I'm saying is I don't really like the idea of treating all of zone one and the exempt properties the same. Because I don't think it gets at the impacts that we've been trying to manage.
I'm curious on land use guidelines, do those ever get updated? And where I'm going with this is like, could you, as we evolve this STR piece, update the land use guidelines to give clarity to what we're trying to accomplish in each of those guidelines? So then that drives the later discussion on the STR piece?
You know, Todd, they have on rare occasion been updated. But, um, remember, they kind of serve as zoning for properties, that they're the equivalent of the town zoning. So once you're playing with the wording, the density, stuff like that, it can be a big deal, because then you've got to notify everyone that lives there and, you know, you're impacting their property values essentially.
Okay.
So, um, it's not something that we do lightly. Um, there's been a couple tweaks here and there over time, but it's not something we typically done more. It's in the line of, we're bringing a new property in and annexing it. We got to create a new land use guideline for it.
Thanks for that clarity. Um, and I definitely agree, we got to change the name. I'm wondering, for whatever we call it going forward in the future, um, if we could maybe add like an application process piece to that to, so we've got like a, just can't just, you know, so there's a high hurdle to, to entry to that, to make sure we're not having twenty new of the new thing that we'll call it, type properties down the road.
Yeah, whatever, however you end up going, it, it should be a very high hurdle, high bar to get over. And it would probably, it would involve a series of some onsite inspection.
Yeah, good.
Well, I think, I mean, I think it could have, you know, whatever license number they have right now, which is a little unclear to me at this point. Seventeen hundred.
And whatever that number is.
Whatever that number is. I think it should be capped at that. And those licenses may move a little bit between those facilities, or maybe they have to stay in the facilities. But like, I don't think we really want to just allow an additional facility to just come into that group and all their licenses come in and become exempt. I guess unless they meet all of the criteria.
I agree. That's stable, for sure.
If we just separate the hotels slash convention slash humidity category and just lean heavily on the lugs, is that the most simple way and the way that actually is our forefathers intended the town to be developed? That when they created these last in eighties, yeah, I mean, and doesn't that kind of conform to how we envisioned the, the community?
Yes.
Being developed, so why wouldn't we do that?
Is that your?
Maybe in addition to the lugs, Jeffrey, we need to add some geographic criteria as well.
But if, if we do that, does that, are we going down the slope of being subjective as far as?
No, I think, I think that the objective is, is to have them in reasonably close proximity to the ski area.
Exactly, yep.
So that would be.
Oh, that would be the geography, okay.
You wouldn't even need that though, if you just went by, by the descriptor.
But six has that weird, you know.
Six does not say anything about scary though, just says lodging.
It says bed base, yeah.
Yeah, that's not, if you, if you would use the ones that we talked about that had, or, you know, walking distance, you could, besides that, that's not, do they have STRs out at, out at Welk? So that's not even.
No, but they, but that encompasses, uh, the, right to the north.
The shores. So maybe, maybe you're right, Dick. Maybe that'd be the easiest to say west of the highway. Or proximity to the mountain or.
Or both.
Yeah, I think we could say both.
You know, I, let's just say we're gonna call the exempt properties resort properties. Cause I'm so tired of using the word exempt. You know, I, I, I think we could do some criteria around, you know, cause for, for me, it's the investment in the amenities slash conference space that makes them unique as well as requiring a shuttle. They would have to have a shuttle to be a part of that group, uh, because resorts have shuttles. And, um, and I think, you know, we could come up with a gross square, square footage of amenity slash conference or a percentage of total property that, um, could be the threshold. that distinguishes this group.
I think you'd have to have to have a minimum and not a percentage.
Yeah, because.
Because percentage you could use.
It could really grow.
We might lose one or two of them out of here, but that's that's.
Were you forcing to run a shuttle?
No, I'm I'm talking about on the the total. I mean, I'm not going to be willing to go on the resort area. I'm not going to put down to sixty five hundred, I don't think. Because the rest are over fifteen thousand. That's more than I'm thinking.
Would you would you say you got to have a shuttle too?
Yeah, absolutely.
And if they don't meet the criterion at that point, then they just become part of whatever
Zone they're in.
Zone they're in.
Yeah.
Yeah, which follows.
There, for clarification, when we're talking shuttle, it's going to be important to say, is it need to be a shuttle dedicated to that property? Or could it be a part of a shared shuttle system? Because we have that mountain.
A lot of them use shared shuttles, so that's okay as long as they're.
It's important to allow that, otherwise we have too many shuttles running around them.
Agreed.
To be one.
Will the shuttle service be required to be available certain time of the year, certain time of day?
What are we current, do we have nothing?
Minimum operating hours, that's great point.
For us, like, I think the the less things we have to enforce, I think that that's where, I think that's where municipalities run into issues in in every portion is that putting things on the books that need to be enforced and trying to have that done. And it doesn't get enforced unless a neighbor or someone is a whistleblower. I'd love to try to keep that enforcement aspect like we're just passing the buck over and going, all right, now make sure this happens, like kind of the delivery zones, right? Like, we we're asking them to staff to enforce all these things that were exciting where I think all these properties of these resort properties lay within the lugs allowing for bed base. I'm not sure what the need to separate the, I guess I don't understand the need to separate them if they reside in the in the corresponding logs.
I think they skew the numbers. I think they skew the numbers because of their saturation of SDR. I don't think you'll ever get to a true number in those zones because of what the way they operate and what they are.
Well, I was just gonna say, sort of a different way, instead of just thinking about how they skew the numbers. I think it kind of reintroduces what Dick's saying is that they come, so the overall is seventy eight percent saturation in that zone if we leave everyone, if we leave all the licenses in, whether it's exempt or not. And the resorts have made a bigger investment in, you know, providing amenities and things for those. And so I think just using that thought and maybe just don't subscribe to that thought, which I think is okay too. But if you agree that that sort of investment in the community and especially conventions, you know, bringing that those off season people or the midweek people into the town, then what you're doing is you're requiring those units to compete for the licenses in just, you know, whatever, four plaques where a local could live. They're competing for the same licenses.
So maybe if I could just, there's a number of these we have a shuttle because they got point positive points for in their development.
Right.
I would say half to two thirds of these meet that. The one thing Sarah just mentioned to me is that the couple that don't have shuttles are in pretty close clock walking proximity to Main Street. I don't know if that makes a difference or not, but I thought I'd just point that out to you.
I know, that's a good point.
Yeah, but that don't mean they're gonna walk.
Okay. Other thoughts on Carol?
I mean, I would like to see what staff comes up with for a definition that where the resorts that are different, that are not impacting our workforce housing as much, they're not impacting neighborhood areas. The nature of those types of businesses and the uses that can, especially with conference area, attract off season midweek business that we do want in town. So I would like to see what staff comes up for a definition with that. With the actual zones, we're talking about land use guidelines, which I think is a very black and white way to define things. I think I'd like to hear a little more clarity, maybe from Kirsten, and our opinion is that we had this task force that came up with this suggestion. Are we straying away from that because we feel like it was too granular in how properties were cut out? And it won't necessarily be upheld within the tools we have as government? Is that why this conversation is going more towards land use guidelines?
That's a good question. I, as I understand it, and I didn't sit through all those committee meetings, but we did initially talk in terms of the land use guidelines. And I do think then there were some discussions about specific properties in or out. And and I do think it is better to stick to the land use guidelines. And one of the things I've pointed to, just to reinforce from last time is if we look at other mountain communities, then there's no one size fits all. And Breckenridge is certainly different for many reasons, but most of the communities are tackling this through zoning and it just is a cleaner route.
This is the one cleaner to go zoning instead of.
Yeah.
And that makes sense. I do have a hard time with that because I think the task force did an excellent job. But if it's an issue that it won't be upheld by the law, then what are other tools? They're using land use guidelines, so.
Well, I I don't think it's a ton of area that will change from from the work that the overlay committee did. There's a couple of areas, but it's not.
Getting some letters out recently.
But, you know, it's not like we're throwing fifty percent of their work out. It's more like, you know, ten percent or fifteen percent different. I mean, really, the big differences are thirty point five, which is upper warrior's mark. Land use district ten, which we talked about. You know, that the sort of cherry picking in in nineteen nineteen has become sort of a patchwork of of things. And really, that's it. Everything else falls almost squarely inside of a zone. Except a little bit of forty, but I that's sort of an easy one, I think, too. So so I don't think we're undoing everything they've done.
And maybe along those lines, I think we have the shaded area with land use guidelines that mention ski area, that mention bed base. I'd like to see what would be, I like the three zone approach. And what would be that new zone two? What is the clear criteria in our land use guidelines that we could possibly use?
Well, here, you know, one of the things that Mark brought up was the fifteen UPA going into that more permissive zone. Nineteen would then move into that because it's twenty UPA. So it's over the fifteen UPA. So you'd have to consider that if that's going to be part of the language. That would be two or the one. I mean, that would be part of one and two would really just go away.
But a big chunk of Main Street.
I don't like that. Fifteen UPA. Yeah, you gotta either decide either you use fifteen UPA or you can't.
Gotcha.
For that, for that reason, and it's all about Main Street.
Main Street and Ridge Street, actually. There's a lot of workforce housing through that, so.
There is a lot of workforce housing.
Well, I'd be interested in just giving that part back to staff, just if if most of us are interested in having, keeping the three zone approach and finding if there is something that fits with the land use guidelines for a zone two. And I don't, you know, obviously, we want to be just as clean as we can make it. But if there is something that makes that distinguishes that area in the land use guidelines from other neighborhoods, like true neighborhoods, I'd be interested in knowing that.
Well, it's definitely higher densities. I think eighteen point two and nineteen are both at twenty UPA. And those are the
Right.
Those are the areas we're talking about that are essentially
Pretty much.
shaped zone two.
Yeah.
I would put, is it my turn or you? You know, if we're going to go with the lugs is lugs is west of Main Street and, you know, proximity of the ski area. I still like my two zone approach, which would be throw out zone three and just go, it's done. Because it's essentially done for a lot of years already with the reduction that we're looking for. And that gets rid of the ambiguity as to whether, when will I get a license out of that? And then go to the current one and two. You know, based on land use guidelines.
Current one and two, you said?
One and two, yeah. So basically, we would have the resort classification, you know, which we talked about previously. We'd have the current zone one based on the the land use guidelines. And then have staff work on a potential zone two as it exists from the overlay group based on land use guidelines.
Except so expanded into the whole, that entire land use district. So on nineteen, for instance, everywhere that's shaded a different color because or the land use two.
Yeah.
Following the.
Because that's what you'd have to do if you're going to go with land use.
Sure.
Every land use would have to adopt whatever the overlay is for the majority of that land use.
Yeah.
So we. Eighteen, eighteen, two and nineteen. Is that what you're saying there?
In eleven.
In eleven. Yeah, I'm fine with that.
And that would be zone two.
Yeah.
Percent saturation.
And I don't know that I have traction with the rest of us up here, but I'd love to just throw out three and say it's done.
I like having a little bit of something in three, just.
Based on the committee's suggestion.
Based on the committee's suggestion, exactly. Todd, you're smiling.
Keep that thought to myself. Just processing.
Actually, eighteen was in, what's, what is eighteen? Eighteen is not part of that.
No, not.
It's eighteen two, not eighteen.
Yeah, so it's just those three, eleven, nineteen and eighteen.
Yeah, eighteen is twelve UPA, so that stays as.
Residential.
Eric, do we know, does the majority of council want to see three zones?
Four. If we're calling the resort classification.
Well, yeah, but is that a zone or is that just a?
That's just a category classification, I guess.
So because if we're gonna look at recreating and finding something within the lugs, right, that would define zone two. Doing that, I want to make sure everybody, that's where everybody would like to head in that direction, the majority would like to head in that direction.
I think all of us would like to head that direction.
I think I'm just wondering about like lug ten, thinking about. Yeah, I think I'm good with the three.
Say it.
No, I just, I really, I like the direction this is heading. I think from a, if I wasn't sitting up here and I was sitting in the audience, let's say, you know, I think it'd be easier to say, well, either you're in, you're out. It's either in it or it's not. And just to to cut it and not say, well, if it's, you know, we got these zones, we got this, it's if you're in where it says you could be in, then you have it. And and maybe we don't like, I'm just talking out loud and like, just maybe there aren't percentages on it. It's like, and I get it, I get the problems. I get the fact that there's gold camp units. I get that there's, you know, those other ones, but when they go up for sale, we have every right to buy those as someone else. And I just I'm just going to more of like kind of the infinite wisdom of the people who created these. And, yeah, they didn't see VRBO, they didn't see Airbnb. But if those are the land uses that are provided to them, then I I think that that should be the will of the of the way it runs. And I know that's not there may be some sacrifices there, but.
I'm sorry, Jay, what what part of this are you trying to drill into? The resort part or the three zone part?
I guess the the whole, I I just, I would I'm just talking about like the whole as an area, the shaded part is, does it matter if it's resort? Does it matter if it's not? Like, if it's in the shade, you can have short term res rentals.
Oh, so what you're saying is in the shaded area, it's unlimited.
What shade, what shade are we talking about?
The ones that are in the lugs, twenty two, twenty three, twenty one, twenty, twenty four, thirty nine.
So bed base.
So you're saying bed base unlimited SDRs?
I'm bringing it up.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And just to have a conversation, just in the fact that I get it, that's, you know, you you guys went through the pain of getting of, you know, setting a cap. And I want to be respectful of that, but it's just, you know, it's not picking winners or losers. It's not sending people a lottery. It's just saying, hey, you know, this is what and I I get that that's radical. I'm just trying to parse through that.
And that would apply to exempt, non exempt, everything?
It just, it it's, you know, in my simplistic mind, it's just the cleanest way of going about it. And I and just, I'm just trying to think through like where where that takes us.
So do you know how many properties are in those?
Yes, we do.
Zones. Go ahead, Sarah.
There's three hundred and three thousand eight hundred seventy four units in those bed base land use districts. That does not include the little portion of six, which is shaded. So that's only eleven, twenty, twenty one, twenty two, twenty three, twenty four, twenty eight, thirty nine.
There's about, in that set, our math is seventy five percent have short term license right now. So there's actually about nine hundred units still available there.
You would be opening up to the potential of nine hundred new units in that area.
That would be, that would be the downside of the theory, theoretically, yeah.
Sorry, will you say the number of units, total number of units?
Seventy four.
And that's total number of units, not total number of licenses, including exempt and, okay.
Yeah, this is just non exempt.
If we went, follow Jay's suggestion in this one or his vision, would we be able to make up the nine hundred extra ones, the possible nine hundred extra ones, some other way in 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 his vision as nine hundred properties sold?
Right.
Plus four hundred other properties on top of it that were above that twenty two hundred cap right now. So it would take a pretty long time to get down to where the old, so what he's getting at is that's the only place in town you'd be allowed to have an STR.
Right.
Everything else you wouldn't unless you currently have one.
Yeah.
And then you'd lose it when you sold. So it's potentially be, I don't know, fifty years.
I I do want to clarify, those numbers do include the exempt properties with.
Right.
Yeah. But and but then some of the exempt properties aren't in that, so.
Only one.
It's free station.
They didn't answer our calls.
They didn't answer the call.
I appreciate how clear that approach would be, but I think we do need to be a little more nuanced. And a lot of this is the substance coming from the task force. So that's why I wouldn't rule that out, but that would take a lot more exploring and analyzing the numbers. And there is that thought that the free market would regulate, it would never be a hundred percent, but it if there is that capacity, the possibility for increase. So with Eric's question, I would go with the three zone approach right now, just having that middle ground with a lower percentage. a lower percentage.
I got the feeling that the majority, if I'm reading this correctly, want to look at a three-zone. And so I think then that's one question that that we have answered, so that would involve us going back and trying to look and what, and we, maybe we pull the task force in, but we try to look at what subjective criteria or objective criteria is through our logs or whatever could define what the, that might be, right? Keeping in mind that nineteen, eighteen-two, maybe eighteen was mentioned. And, uh, see.
I think the second part of that is the math on, so you create a resort classification, and then you use the twenty-two-hundred number overlay, and you look at the saturation in each of those districts and see what that means to that twenty-two-hundred number, and where are, where do those licenses live then? If, if overlay district one has sixty-seven percent after you take the resort out, and two has fifty, and three has, what was it, thirty originally? And find out how that parses that twenty-two-hundred out. I think that's going to be a I think that's going to be the numbers we need to see if that even, if it mathematically works.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Sarah, but
That's not
Why not? Remember, we, we didn't, the overlay district didn't just apply those saturation percentages to the cap. We, we identified zone one is where there should be a higher
I get, I get that for the, for the future. This is just to find out where we are right now.
Got you.
We need to find out how many licenses live in each zone right now, and then, because the numbers are skewed because of the resort component.
Correct.
So once we find out that, then we can go in and set whatever cap we can agree on, because you want zero on, in three, but others don't.
Sure.
So that's the next argument, once we see
Using the same concepts as the overlay.
Correct, yeah.
But they're not skewed because of the resort component, because the resorts are already out as exempt. So the twenty-two-hundred is
It, it is there, but it's not in the other numbers that we have.
So if we just look at this red shaded area right now, and we were to pull the resort numbers out of there, I believe our total STRs are fifteen something. Is that correct? Don't we have that number? With the resorts out?
Because there's one sixty-two in two, and nine seventy-one in three.
Which is different than these.
Wow.
Okay.
And that's, you, there's, the typical zone one's even bigger, so, I mean, out of here is probably
That's okay.
So then I think once we get those numbers and know what it is, then you can go in and place the cap based on whatever other criterion we agree on, or most of us agree on.
And that's where I think we really do want to use the guidance of, the, the guidance that the overlay district, overlay committee has already provided us.
And that was that like eighty percent in zone one, and then much, you know, twelve or fifteen in zone three and fifteen.
And then you'll know what you have available in each.
Exactly.
So that makes sense. How much of reduction you need.
Correct.
Yep. Yeah, I, I mean, I like Jay's concept of keeping it clean and simple, and that's kind of how my brain works as well, it's like on, off. But I like the idea of the land use guidelines and, and also the input from the, the committee and, and having some weight there with what they, the work they did.
Does that give you enough to get us to
Yeah, it does. I mean, we had the very same discussion internally a couple of weeks ago, is like, might be just cleaner if we could it up in, uh, zone one, if we're, if we're confined it more, but the issue came down to, there's still quite a few licenses that are out there. It's probably more like that sixty-seven percent Eric was talking about. So that's going to eat into that cap. You know, make that more difficult to achieve. So we can certainly come back with the analysis now that we've kind of got a better idea of how zone one's going to look. We'll bring back the information, you know, in terms of criteria for zone two regarding the, um, land use district and some of those key describers that make most sense, that focus it largely on what the overlay task force recommended. So, yeah, I think
Because you don't have enough to do.
No, and then
You two, just do a brief dive into what Jay's talking about? Just like a one-sheeter that says, these are sort of the ramifications of it.
Yep.
We, we know what the benefit is, it's easier.
You know, you know what I'd argue is the, the zone one, the, the impact of, of, of a larger bed base or more people in zone one is less impactful than a larger bed base in the peripheral regions of the community. So that kind of goes, follows Jay. Yeah, there's more, there'd be more bodies, but the, the bodies would be less annoying.
That also follows
You know, as far as driving and, and, you know, all that, so it wouldn't be, it would, it would be less of a, of a drain on the infrastructure of the community. I'm using annoying. I shouldn't have used, I should have looked for a synonym, but impactful, but, so, yeah.
The interesting thing is, the, the, the thing, the places in zone one that have existed all this time have been set up as close to skiing, they've been set up for STRs. They're not even remotely close to a hundred percent usage, which is sort of interesting. The, the real question that you cannot answer is, if you go down Jay's path, would it change? Or would it stay?
A hybrid with a migration, like, we, we were talking about migration a couple of weeks ago, and said for every one sold in two, two or three, two were given in there, or, you know, like, is there a hybrid portion there that kind of could help?
It's simple, you said.
Well, I mean, we would have to do a migration or something to get, because there would be, we, it would really open us up to a lot more licenses, like in the immediacy. And so I think that would be a very important part, step. I wouldn't support something like that because we discussed this for six months at the committee level, and this, that is really, I mean, we talked about exactly this, and like, should we just only have, you know, zone one unlimited? We looked at these numbers, we went back and forth every other week, honestly, because somebody would bring it up, but why aren't we doing this again? And we really went over and over, and, um, the committee was very, I mean, a lot of those places in zone one are small um, and perfect for, you know, and still affordable for people to buy, whereas, you know, other neighborhoods are less affordable. And so, I mean, we, it feels like there are a lot of reasons, and I think very valid reasons, to not just open up zone one as, uh, unlimited.
But the affordable ones that are there to buy, we have programs set up to purchase those and de-restrict them and resell them.
Yeah, I mean, if every, if we had a first rider refusal on all of zone one, I absolutely would agree with you. But that's just not the case, and there are a lot of people who are avoiding us, frankly. So it's just, it's not as simple as that.
Yeah, we don't have a hundred percent success rate, plus, I don't, we don't have an unlimited budget either. We're spending a lot of money on the buy downs.
Okay, everybody good with this direction for level three?
And then the other thing we'll bring is crack at a definition for this new resort
Be great.
Um, properties.
That'll be the more difficult part.
Is there a minimum amount of square footage you want to see? Dick, I heard you comment, you want
Fifteen thousand for me.
I mean, that'll just preclude one building.
I'd like staff just to let us know with, where they are personally. And what else is there? Fifteen thousand plus this, plus that?
Well, shuttles, uh, for me is a must.
Yeah, me too.
And I don't need a time set on a shuttle. For me, the shuttle is just, it's okay if it's part of, uh, master shuttle group. I don't think we need to delve into that it runs twenty-four hours a day or any of that stuff, so.
Yeah, I agree. We could do that in administrative roles, if we wanted to, keep it easy.
During the application, we could review their contract with
Right. Is this enough for everybody for today?
It's too much.
Thank you guys so much.
Thank you.
I don't know how you make sense of what goes on here.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Great job.
Do whatever you want.
Do like B O C C, this is due a moratorium.
They're all about that.
I know, I took the blame for it today in front of the
I know you did.
I said it was my fault, that's where we went, and I'm sorry.
Pull into the childcare memo?
Yep, childcare memo. Childcare capacity analysis recommendations.
I'm good, thanks.
So Austin has a memo in the packet and a quick PowerPoint that we're going to go through. And before we get into the childcare capacity analysis
Laura, you're going to have to talk into your mic more with
Before we get into the childcare capacity analysis, there was, um, one issue in the, um, childcare minutes that I did want to bring to your attention since we, um, didn't talk about the minutes. At the last, um, childcare meeting about the centers, um, making a decision to raise their rates pretty considerably. And we just wanted the council to be aware of that. The, um, centers have been, you know, obviously challenged with staffing and feel that the cost of care, they cannot cover it with their current rates, um, because they need more, and there's a goal to definitely, um, compensate teachers at a higher salary. I think they're shooting for, um, somewhere around fifty thousand dollars. That's the center's goal, to be able to compensate teachers. So they're going to, um, choose to raise their rates, and we just think this, um, council needs to be aware of that, because obviously that's going to drive some families to tuition assistance, because they'll now qualify. But there will be some families that do not qualify for tuition assistance and are getting hit with a fifteen percent, um, rate increase all of a sudden. And so there may be conversations around the community, and again, this is being, um, driven by the childcare centers. We're okay with it, because we think the cost of care, um, should be covered by the tuition. Um, and then we can come in with tuition assistance for families who are, um, cost burdened, so, um, yeah.
Can I add one thing?
Yeah, please.
I just wanted to make sure that everyone saw that it was going to get rolled out in, uh, the centers might do it a little bit earlier, but they're going to carry that cost until September, when the universal pre-K goes down to three-year-olds. So there are a significant number of people who would get their care, um, assisted at the county level for three-year-olds and four-year-olds. So that will definitely ease that burden, and then we're expanding tuition assistance, which we all set up here and approved to a, um, wider range of people. I know, you don't even know what Jay approved without us.
No, I can only imagine.
And then I do want to say that for one child, um, who's in care full-time, um, that would be a three hundred, the increase would be a three hundred dollar a month increase. So while it is not a small amount, it's also for those people who can afford it, because remember, they're like, uh, above a hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars a year. It's, you know, it's fairly manageable.
For a family of four.
Does this money go into the teachers?
Yes.
In part.
And so the, yes, so, I mean, I'm sure we're going to get into that, so I don't want to jump, jump ahead.
Countywide is adopting this philosophy?
Well, we're very hopeful. Do you guys, you were in that meeting?
Yeah, it's in progress. We don't have an update right now, but it's in progress.
It is important to note that our, um, provider agreements with the centers, you know, ensure that the centers operate independently, but there is a clause in that provider agreement, I think, that talks about, um, the town can, approves rate increases. So we're just bringing this to your attention. They're requesting it, we support it, and just want to make sure there's, the council's okay with it as well. It's not our choice to raise the rates or hold the rates down, but, um, we're aware of the consequences and think it will help them cover their true cost of care, so staff supports it.
And it is all going to the teachers. The intent is to get teachers to a, you know, low wage that's competitive in our community, and certainly with the amount of money that you can make in, um, other less skilled positions. It was definitely a necessary step to take.
That this would eliminate our need to put that hundred and fifty thousand a year in, uh, salary subsidies, because we'll be putting additional money into scholarships to help with those people that have, you know, that need more money now with the impact, and I think that that's a cleaner way for us to get that out there as opposed to trying to subsidize salaries.
It'll be a hundred percent needs-based tuition assistance for those who can't cover the true cost of care.
I think you have to charge true cost of care.
Right direction.
And then you figure out how to take care of the people that
Need it.
that you can't get inside, but I think you have to do that.
Okay, thank you. We just wanted to review that. It was in the minutes. I want to make sure you're well aware that that's coming sooner than we ever anticipated. And so with that, we'll, um, we'll, uh, turn over to Austin on the capacity analysis PowerPoint.
Yep. So this is all included in your packet, so we'll just review this, but the goal is to address, uh, the community's growing need, especially in infant toddler age ranges, and determine the priority for future capacity, um, programs and expansions. Jeffrey is really excited about it. That was a big yawn.
No, no, I just, I, I was just kidding. That's, that's how I get romantic.
Yeah, either, that's fair. Some things to take in consideration, again, um, a potential new center is still two to three years away. All recommendations presented today have been vetted by each center's director. Uh, one thing to note, Open Arms was enrolled, uh, in our program just this past year, so they're actually not complete, include, included in this capacity study. So you won't see any information about that center specifically. Um, accessible quality care and center sustainability and positive impact on children and family is paramount, um, in our program. The committee has recommended all capacity expansions based on the current waitlist data. Uh, in two thousand and eighteen, we called a hundred and fifty-four children on a waitlist in Breckenridge a crisis. Today is pretty jarring. Um, as of May fourth, that's about four hundred and thirty-six kids on a waitlist in Breckenridge, and that's D-duped data. Um, I have the ages broken out right there, but I just want to pause and make sure I can offer any clarification or any questions you might have on just the considerations before we get into the meat. Go ahead.
Are these four hundred and thirty-six children the children of people that either reside or work in Breckenridge? What is that number?
We don't know. So leg up data, um, Catherine, um, who sits with early childhood options, um, they, I've asked that question, because you've asked it a couple of times. Uh, and they don't have that capability right now, but they're adding functionality to that list, so we should know, but I don't know today.
I'd like to hear that, too. Well, that's really important, because if we're going to spend a ton of money, it's, if, not to be, you know, crass about it, but if a lot of these children are from other parts of the county, and we're expecting parents to drive them here, because we're the only town that's going to put money into childcare, I don't think that's fair to the citizens of Breckenridge.
I will also mention that, um, the centers, and we talked about this before, but the centers, right around the pandemic timeframe, we're capturing that data for us. So it's not through leg up, but we could do an extra dig in terms of, um, families on the waitlist at the current centers, and we do have our center directors here, so we could definitely ask if they have a, another view on that, but families that work in and serve the community are, have priority.
Right.
So.
That part I know, I just
Yeah, okay.
This number that we keep throwing around, I want to really know what it means.
Fast leg up to include that in there, and so we're hopefully get there.
And with the waitlist data, is that taking into account individuals that are on the waitlist at every center?
Yeah, so that's D-duped.
Okay.
Any other questions, and I'll move on?
It's really weird to drive.
When you say every center, every center countywide, not just every center in Breckenridge?
Everyone who's on a waitlist is on every
Oh, I get you, I get you.
Just a clear picture of kind of where we're at today. Fall enrollment, that was when the study was, when EUA went into the centers, so that's what they were enrolled. One thing that's important regarding enrollment numbers, that all, not kids go five days a week, so that's the amount of children that are enrolled. Some go two days, some go four days. So that's the enrollment number today, and the desired capacity, um, desired capacity is basically the, um, amount of children, let's see, capacity, um, by desired ratios, that's teacher to, to child ratios. Today, that's how many come on an average day. Um, and I do need to note, the two fifteen number is actually two oh six, that totaled incorrectly. So, um, desired, our desired capacity number, um, is about two hundred and six, um, slots in Breckenridge. Um, today, we sit at one ninety-five, so we're about eleven under that number. And then, uh, obviously, including, um, the staff number, we are currently, as of today, down sixteen teachers amongst the, um, school centers that are listed.
Also, a terrible question that I should know
Yeah, yeah.
You know, on the committee. Desired child to teacher, or desired capacity being at two oh six, yet we're down sixteen staff. I guess, uh, I, I guess I need a little more clarity on what is capacity by desired child-to-teacher ratio? Like, what is, what is that? Is that that's how many we could possibly fit? Like what is, what is that? Is that, that's how many we could possibly fit if we were fully staffed?
Yes. Yes. So there's, there's state ratios and then there's desired ratios. State ratios are a little bit more mathematical in terms of basically how many bodies can fit in a room. We have desired capacities, which is the best outcome for the child and the staff.
But if we had 16 more staff, wouldn't we, 11, we would have more than 11 more kids, right?
You know, a lot of that is, is admin personnel filling into classrooms. So and ladies, feel free to correct me if I'm, yeah. A lot of that is just all hands on deck. Directors are filling into classrooms. Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, of course. To the next slide. So again, these are all included in your packet. This gives you an overview in terms of each center, the amount of space, vetted spaces for infant toddler. Remember, this is centered around infant toddler, the cost for that expansion, the cost per child, and then the timeline. Yeah.
I'm so sorry, but I was slow in picking up on Jay's conversation.
Yep.
I don't, I was under the impression, so we're saying here that like Timberline, the capacity by desired child teacher ratio is 68. But my understanding is that right now they're at like 85% full. But you said that this week they had 68 kids. So I think the capacity by desired child teacher ratio is more like 75.
Did you guys tell me something?
Sure. So where we stood before.
Can you hand her a mic?
Yeah. Does that one?
Have to because we're on Zoom. Sorry. We all want to hear you talk.
Where we stood pre-pandemic was we functioned between 90 and 95% capacity. We stood, we fluctuated at summer. There was attrition before SPK rolled out, but that's where we were comfortable.
But can you tell us how many kids per day that is? Like just on a, I know it varies because Friday it's way less.
It's, range is about 55 kids a day. We don't have kids and that's like a loose number, Kelly. But we don't have that many kids who attend full-time. We have lots of four days, three days, two days. So the number fluctuates throughout the week, but we ran between 90 and 95% capacity pre-pandemic. As we are rebuilding, we're functioning at about 85% capacity. We're comfortable returning to 95% capacity. We feel like that's a safe number for us to operate at and everything is successful. We're down staff right now. So I'm in classrooms, my whole admin teams in classrooms, which is where that shortfall of teachers is. Bringing more class or more teachers into the classroom just means we go back to operational stuff and less sort of like survival mode. So we can operate with, I believe it's, what was the number I told you yesterday? I'd have to do the math right now.
I, I think it was more in the range of like between 70 and 75 because you're not at that 90 to 95% capacity right now. But yet on 523, you had 68 kids. And so all, the only reason I think this is important is I'm trying to figure out what the real number of kids that we could have in care in Breckenridge. And I, I think this, in this table, the 68, 56, 62, I think is a little bit low.
I think that's how many you can have.
That's how many for quality.
Actually at desired capacity right now.
Well, we're not, minus 11 spaces.
Okay.
We're not.
That clears it up. Thank you.
We're probably at like a 10% deficit from where we're at.
Okay.
Comfortably function.
Okay. We'll have an issue.
Not, why would a, I mean, we're sitting here talking about millions and millions of dollars to add capacity. Why would we not operate at 100% capacity? Why do we build a center that only operates at 95% capacity as, as the goal?
Well, because of exactly what Leslie said. I mean, sometime, and I'm not really sure why kids don't come in for one day a week. I think it's maybe difficult, but like they'll have, you know, a Friday where they have space for 68 kids, but there's only 55 kids who attend on Fridays. And so it's not like there's a whole space and there are kids that could come all week. It's that there's a random day here and there in different classrooms where they're not at capacity.
Yeah, I would think as long as, as at some point we're at 100%, our goal should be.
100% because of what is, 95% is pretty great.
Oh, goodness gracious.
You could just, I mean, that's just, that's good.
Did you catch that? So yeah, 95% is a great goal. There's reasons that you have to keep a, hold a space for two months because that kid's going to move up whatever ages, all kinds of reasons like that, or new kids enrolling in a month to hold the space. So if we can all get to 95%, that would solve a lot of problems. You need the staff to get there. Some of us are close to that. If we started enrolling sooner after the pandemic, I know Martha is still working to get back up to that capacity. And I would say we're probably 85, 90%. You know, when you enroll a new student, it may be one day a week at first till they build up to five days a week, parent schedules, all that kind of stuff. Does that help?
So I would love if we could have a table where there is clarity in what 95%, how many kids that is? And how many teachers that is, so that we can really understand these numbers.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Yeah.
How many kids per day? Just per day. Because how many kids varies on, how many days they use.
That enrollment number is.
Yeah, enrollment is.
Yeah. Move on.
Please.
Okay, this is, again, we'll wait for another question on the past slide, but cost for the project per child and then the timeline. So again, in the memo at the beginning of this presentation, the committee did recommend moving forward with all expansions. The staff recommendation differs from that, but you can see here, if we move forward with all, we would have 62 new spaces. The cost would be nearly 7.5 million and the cost per child would be 100, about 120,000. Moving forward to staff recommendations, taking into consideration the cost per child as well as just the type of spaces that we can add. Staff is recommending moving forward with Little Red Schoolhouse, which would add 30 spaces. TLC would add 10. And then again, you're seeing that cost per child on average, take into account, both those projects would be about $150,000. Any questions before I move forward? I have all the projects at the end for reference, but they were in your packet. So if anybody wants to review a specific project, I'm happy to pull that up.
I did have some questions with Little Red. It seems like the plan is that it would be built on the field. However, what's presented in our packet is these three additions within the building. So my concern is the cost that's presented to us is not reflective of what it would cost.
Yeah. So you're seeing it, when we got the report back from EUA, you're seeing one of their recommendations that came through and you saw the full report. We went back after our vetting and presented the other opportunity, which would be a new building, like another additional campus. Those, those costs have been confirmed by EUA and are, because they did the ROM after we provided that feedback. So those are representative of that project.
Are we getting like the 1A money, some of the 1A money?
We don't know that yet.
Don't talk. No, the answer is no.
That's a, that's a sure subject, Jeff. Really? Want to, want to work on that?
Yeah.
First rule, 1A money is.
There's a lot, a lot of work that needs to be done, a lot more work that needs to be done on Little Red. And what that entails, what it looks like, I wouldn't put a whole lot of, you know, comfort in those numbers right there on that. And I think there's, you know, how much, if any, are they going to protrude out into that park area? What would that expansion look like? You know, we, these are all great things to show and get on the list and done. And I think there's some things that we need to take to a, a new level in looking at this so that we're ready to be competitive. If, I will say if and when the county decides what's the next project they want to partner on? Or what's the, what's the grant opportunity that we want to pursue based on some of the new dollars that are out there? You know, we want to position ourselves. But for you to go out and commit to saying, we're going to go commit $3 million right now and in one to two years and we're going to build XYZ, I think that's the wrong thing to do. I think there's some low hanging fruit you can look at. And I think we should be working with these centers to say, I mean, that'd be like Jim Baird saying, I want to hire 10 more cops. And I'd say, well, why? You can't fill the positions you have. So why would we add capacity for, you know, 10 more kids when we can't even fill the centers that we got right now? We got to figure out how to do that first before we start planning for, you know, how we're going to add more down the road. And then, and then there's some things that could be done at Timberline, I think, to remodel existing space, which is your best cost per child ratio out there. And that's some of your low hanging fruit that we could probably pencil in in the next year or two on that stuff. And meantime, you know, depending on after, you know, where you go on this, I think we just have to position ourselves and keep fighting for the 1A and the grant stuff out there.
Rick, I don't disagree with you. I, I'd like to see, I mean, maybe the committee could go back to work and look at, look at what support they may need to try to get fully staffed. Are there things that we could support to help the committee, you know, recruit, retain? You know, and maybe put a higher focus on childcare workers' housing. I know we're considering, I don't know if that's the final for the stuff on block 11, but I'd love to, to, to see the committee's ideas on, you know, what, what kinds of things we could do to support their ability to get fully staffed and, and retention ideas as well.
I agree. And I, I think any sort of investment in expansions got to have, actually, I don't know what the, the right ratio is. Maybe you double it for adding in the housing piece to support. Cause I kept reading in the report there, like a little nervous about expanding because we can't figure out fully staffing. And certainly in the short term, we've got to get fully staffed, but I think any sort of capital dollars for expansion have got to have a, a second capital investment in housing. Just so that you, you're just building the housing as you're expanding your facilities. So you're just set up for success there. And then I'd love, and we chatted a little bit on the Vail piece. I'd love to see in a conversation I have with Vail, you know, if you've got some facilities, I know there's some hurdles and some challenges there and certainly two different entities. But they've got some space and there's got to be a win in there, assuming we can figure out the employee piece. You know, with their.
I think it's important to note that when we did this work session with all the centers to go through and vet the capacity or vet the potential expansion projects is we took staffing off the table because right now a lot of the conversations can stop with staffing. The reality is that our community is growing with 900 units in the next five years projected in terms of workforce projects. And nothing in the, in the, the RFP for, for Alta Verde is in the works to move forward. But preface that at the beginning that staffing was taken off of the table for that conversation. It was solely just on what could we do? But yes, I've made all those notes.
I think, I mean, I totally agree with what Dick said. I, we, anything we can do to support getting employees because that impacts every single business in the community. And so it's really for the good of the community. We really have to make sure that these places are fully staffed. But at the same time, I feel very nervous about moving forward with any of the additions. And I'll tell you why. When I looked at these reports and I'm going to use our most recent $300,000 that we put into Carriage House. And their square footage, you know, for number of kids for play area is 142 kids, which is like over double either of the other facilities. And I, I'm sure there's a million nuanced reasons that they have this huge square footage. But then on this capacity by desired child teacher ratios, it's the smallest. So I don't understand, like, why would we expand these facilities when we don't necessarily get more kids for that? It just doesn't make sense. I mean, Carriage House is a big facility. Little Red's the smallest facility. And it has this, you know, the same number of kids, well, more enrolled. I don't understand this whole number of kids per day. But I, so I really think before we do, we put any money into an addition, we need to understand exactly how that's going to translate to kids in care. And it needs to be either part of the agreement or we need to really understand the addition. Does it function the way it's supposed to function? I don't know the specifics on that, but these number, like having the biggest facility with the least kids doesn't make sense to me. And it sure doesn't inspire confidence in, let's just make all the facilities bigger and then we'll have more kids in care. So I really, I love that you're going forward with the RFP for the new facility. I think just like Rick said about grants and we know there's money out there and we need to be ready for that, to capitalize on that. But I think that I really would love to see the committee come with a specific plan for employment and how to support that. And then, you know, get into the, the bottom of this, bigger facility doesn't necessarily mean more kids. That's a real question for me.
And I think the 15% increase in terms of teacher wages is a step in the right direction.
Definitely.
And that came from when Kelly was still in the committee. You have big shoes to build.
I have nothing to do with it.
Do you want to, we can definitely keep running through, obviously, just setting the scene in terms of the new center and the RFP is moving forward for design purposes for the Alta Verde. Obviously some update in terms of Smith Ranch and then potentially the new center at Keystone regard, or near their workforce housing project. And then it's probably important for you to just, do you want to go through budget, Rick, or do you want me to just?
Let's, I mean, how much more do, do you want to see more on what any expansion at Little Red could even look like as far as drawings or pencil things? Or do you want to table that for a little more and address the whole staffing capacity issue?
Until the staffing's addressed, I don't know why we would do more than what we've got, but
I agree.
Other opinions, I'm happy to hear.
I defer to Kelly on that one. Sometime before tonight's over, can we talk again about 1A? I don't, I don't understand why we're not getting money from those people.
Well, because there's, when, when they went to the ballot for some money and somebody correct me if I'm wrong here. They basically, they know that there's a percentage of dollars. And remember they bundled different things.
Yeah.
And there was a percentage of it that was going to go towards childcare capacity, right? Issues, building new centers, whatever, adding on. And they projected that over the life of that bill. And because Smith Ranch is costing so much now to build, it's basically taking all the money that is generated. But they are getting some grant money. So the more grant money they get, and which is why we supported them getting some, you know, they went for one of those earmarks again for that. Because the more, the more federal dollars or state dollars that come into that project, the more it frees up the possibility for us to have access to those dollars down the road for expansion or a new center. Because the way it is right now, my understanding, the way it is right now, that there wouldn't be any dollars left to add on. So we'd be.
Universal pre-K came from the 1A money, didn't it? I mean, sorry, SPK.
Yeah.
So our families are benefiting. We're just not going to get capital money for it.
All of our families benefiting.
So SPK, oh, go ahead. SPK originally funded four-year-olds, four-year-olds in, in pre-K. And then this, this September, they actually will onboard three-year-olds. So the Breckenridge Tuition Assistance Program funds zero to three-year-olds. SPK funds three and four-year-olds.
What's FQTK?
SK, Summit Pre-K, Summit Preschool. Yeah, sorry.
Funded, that's the less we fund through scholarship tuition assistance, which the money that we projected to save is probably how much money now we'll be using to offset the increase in tuition, but it's a wash for us. So that's a good thing. But, yeah.
As far as the capacity discussion goes, you know, I think that I, I understand almost the frustration that we have excess capacity. As far as the capacity discussion goes, you know, I think that I, I understand almost the frustration that we have excess capacity with 460 some odd kids on the waitlist. But I do, I would like to see kind of a linear feeder program of how we're going to slowly address the issue. The, the staffing problem will not last forever. And I don't want to wait until staffing is solved to start the ball rolling on things that we could get moving in the pipeline now. And so if, you know, Carriage House gets, you know, staffed up and we can get 30 kids in or 15 kids in, in a month because of the raise in wages of going from $19 to $24 an hour or from whatever, up to $50,000, that's great. And then I think that there should be timber, or timber lines with that multipurpose room thing. Maybe that's, it says one to two years, you know, maybe that's nine months or 12, nine to 12 months down the road. And then Little Red is two years and then the, the new center is three years. I just think that's important to line things up so it's not just an, oh, nuts moment of going, wow, we have nothing rolling. Let's try to get the ball rolling now. And so it's just kind of, you know, I, I feel like we should have things lined up and at least know how to execute and make them shovel ready. So when we're prepared to do so, we can act on them.
I'm glad we have the potential center by FERC ready, that RFP is out, hopefully be shovel ready. All of all these presented, I think Timberline was the most viable just based off the low cost. And I think that could truly be some low hanging fruit with the quicker timeline. But I think we need a little more information before we go down that path. And also seeing how centers around the county coming online potentially ease pressure off our Breck waitlist.
Listen, to get the number that Eric asked for of how many are on that list that work and live here.
There's a, there's another number too that is a, is a pie in the sky number. But what, what does the projects that we have in the pipeline right now? If you have a rough guess of how many children get generated in some of these neighborhoods, can you apply that to what we're building? To potentially know what your future needs going to be?
Well, I mean, I think that's why we try to do needs assessments.
Oh, yeah, I mean.
Two years, the number 400 will have doubled.
Well, I mean, if that's the case, then we'd be foolish.
Although we're building a different type of housing right now.
Right.
We are building rentals more for single type people than, you know, the Wellington-style neighborhoods. But it has a little different outcome.
Nice to know some projection and having whatever the current actual number is right now for Breckenridge. I asked Kelly, how many, how, how many kids are being taken care of in the rest of the county?
In terms of other centers and other.
Yeah.
Do you? That's a waitlist though. What are you talking about?
I'm talking about how many actual spaces there are in the entire county right now. 600 total, is that, and then subtract, what do we have, two something?
Two oh six. Well.
No, but that, no. Are you talking also about the school district? Yeah, so there's only two other centers, right?
That's what I want to know. What, what are the other towns?
Large centers.
You guys got this. That's fine, but we'll relay it back to the big group. We have about.
So about 120, about 120 spaces in the rest of the county. In the large facilities, not in the, not in the private homes thing. Okay.
And not in the school. Because they have a bunch of, the schools have.
Yeah, the schools are, yeah, they, that's funded differently though.
But that includes the 600 that Corey was talking about.
Right.
The 600 kids throughout the county.
Okay. Okay. Other questions for, or comments?
I would like to see them, to go along with Jay, I think prior to going into our CIP for 2023, I'd like to see them bet this TLC number some more. Because that may be one you want to consider if you want to throw anything in there. If it's, if it's viable and doable at, at a reasonable cost and we can truly gain those spaces and, and we're approving of the budget without, you know, major expansion, I think that should be your next low hanging fruit that you'd want to look at. And we could, so, you know, take, take another two months and let's get, let's bet that number a little bit and see if it's worth throwing, throwing that in the CIP.
Cool.
If you want a pipeline.
Yep, sounds great.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Earthquake seems to go up after every season of Outlander is released.
It used to be Game of Thrones. I noticed that.
Before you break, you want to knock out some reports? We have time, let's do it.
Sure.
We can get. Want to do that?
Yeah. Everybody good with that?
Yeah. Couple reminders for.
Oh, we'll do that other one later.
Tonight, which is your fifth Tuesday, May 31st, it will be Tim Berry's retirement celebration. 6:30 at Beaver Run. So we will do a reminder, but please, hopefully get a good turnout there for.
Suit and tie, Jeffrey.
Oh, yeah.
Morning, don't, don't consume too much because the next morning, bright and early, June 1st, 8:30, good governance training.
I talked to that, some guy, Sam called me, he wanted me to lecture. He wanted me to give a lecture.
We're going to plant you with some questions.
In the, do we do the conference room or?
I don't know that, that's been decided.
Yeah, let's, minor detail, let's get a location. Here, all right. That's all I have.
We didn't have Castro MMC this time. Open space?
Oh, we had the open house last night and a meeting last night. Open house went well. I mean, the fact that, you know, we didn't do food and some people showed up. Usually, I think, I really think food is a, is a.
I thought you were the draw. You know, that's what you told me.
You know what I thought? I, I, I'm losing my appeal, it seems. But, yeah, it's, it's, I think a lot, we get a lot of good information from, you know, the people that showed up. It was kind of sad that we had to kind of have it in a larger area, the gymnasium. It had been difficult to hear and, and there again, no food was definitely a bummer.
Said food, no food like four times.
Jeffrey-type people. Yeah. You know, one of the things that we did talk about is, also, I will say disclaimer, we had the meeting in the gym. And I, it was just difficult to hear because people were playing basketball and stuff. But I know we are thinking of renaming, are going to rename Trail of Tears to Bloody Knuckles. And that was a, a, a number eight, reached out to Mona and that was her suggestion because, you know, Trail of Tears was because it was just so hard to work on. But then again, there's different interpretations of that, of that name. So we're going to move it to Bloody Knuckles because that kind of connotes him carrying all that lumber and, and chewing up his hands. So that's, that's kind of a tribute to Chris.
Is that offensive to anyone?
I love it.
Ah, you know, no, I mean, it will be in about 10 years. Everything's offensive. But, but yeah, so that's kind of cool. Talked about the trail projects, we're moving, we, you know, the town cleanup day, we had to move and that was the duty-free Breck Day. So we're moving that to the 24th, when, when we reschedule, when we reschedule town cleanup. So.
June 4th.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Done the 24th.
Awesome.
Yeah, so that's good.
Thanks.
Look at that goal from the end, yeah.
It's going to be all soaking wet. Dick, BTO?
BTO, we have not had a meeting.
Breck history, Ms., oh, are you still Ms. Sunday?
I'll state this.
Okay.
Yeah.
I haven't had my first meeting. They canceled last month's meeting, so I'll have my first meeting in two weeks.
Mr. Rankin, creative arts.
No meetings since we last met.
Beauty. Events, Ms. Owens.
We also haven't had a meeting.
These are my, I love the second meeting. Childcare.
No meeting.
Dan. And workforce housing.
No meeting.
And social equity.
A date cover.
Yeah. A great meeting. You know, we were provided with the, the blueprint, which we, we discussed and, and, and provided some input on. We were working on the lens to try to clarify that. You know, the BTO did an engagement survey, which they, they got great information. They, they contracted with a, a group that, that reached out to many of our non-English speaking community members. Because they've always been, it's been so hard to get input. You know, it's been absent from a lot of our, our information gathering. You know, and, and I think that the number one piece that came out of it was trust. I mean, all of our pieces, the lens and everything else, we've, we've got to think about building trusts around our programs to really, to engage, to more successfully engage. Housing's a, a challenge, childcare, transportation, healthcare. But, you know, the, the financial challenges. Education, sports activities is no real surprise. I for, you know, I, I think the most glaring piece was the trust, which could, could be applied to anything we do. So, um, so it was great meeting. It was good, good meeting.
Awesome. Any other matters?
I have one other matter.
Yeah.
So the school bus drivers, remember last year or this year, we had that big problem where all the people from Little River had to. I was wondering if when we're having the discussion with the CMC housing folks, because it's with the county, CMC and Breck, if we could reserve a couple of those units for school bus drivers? Or if we could at least talk about, you know, if that would be something that would be a benefit to them? What a look.
When we do, when we do COP financing, just like Block 11, and we try to say we want to take a building and hold it for childcare workers, they, when they're doing a leaseback on these bonds, it, it becomes problematic when you're earmarking things. To the extent that you might informally be able to do something, maybe.
Okay.
That's, that's my look. So.
Okay.
Other matters?
Two quick, easy ones. One, just planting the seed of, do we want to look at a long-term rental license? More from perspective of having data on how many units we've got? Because we can get into the GIS and figure out how many, how many locals are living in a place they own. But we'd love to understand, all right, how many bedrooms do we have? Because I think that's going to help us on the housing hunt going forward. I know there's some challenges with that, but throwing that out there. And then after the meeting today, the pizza and politics, one of the, the folks that was there was like, hey, think about renaming the, the hotline, the Good Neighbor Hotline, just kind of turning that into a more positive thing.
Instead of the NARC hotline?
Yeah, exactly. So just throwing that out there. Thank you.
I like that.
Yeah, I do too.
We have been hesitant to put, do a long-term rental, to require a, a long-term rental license, even if it was free or anything, just because it's, it's a step, an extra step. We're requiring people to go through to get licensed and we, you know, we want to encourage people to do it, not make it more burdensome. And so, you know, from a staffing standpoint, it's just, we've been focusing on the other and we really haven't moved in that direction. You're right, we don't have a handle on how many long-term rentals we have. I even wondered if we, instead of charging them, we give them money to come in and get their license. We'll give you, you know.
I think it's problematic in a lot of ways, unfortunately.
Probably because there are some units that are not legal and we don't really want to scare those people off, I don't think.
Got it. I, if it's something that's, one of the things when people bring stuff up, I want to see, you know, if, if enough council members support us trying to move in that direction, then we'll look at a strategy, which right now I think is a little difficult for us, but it doesn't mean it couldn't happen down the road.
I think the phone data piece gets to some of that information, that, that fenced phone area. And if your phone is here for nine months, we consider that you live here. It sort of gets to part of that information.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that. I wonder if we could pay and just make it volunteer. Okay, here's $100 a year for reported. Yeah, just, just.
If we get any idea what those numbers are.
Yeah.
It'll be interesting. Denver passed that long-term rental licensing, I think, a year or so ago. But I don't know if that's been rolled out yet or if any other communities have done this, just like maybe high level, quick research on the success of those programs.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Can we focus on me for a minute?
Sure.
What do you need? Also, BOSAC, I just got an email from Anna, or I just opened an email that she sent yesterday. BOSAC, the, the new master plan, go to BOSAC, which will also send a council on Friday, May 27th. And they'll schedule a special meeting with DTJ Designs and Money to Gold with the draft plan.
So this Friday?
Yeah. Yeah. And then, you know, then we'll, then BOSAC will review it and offer input and then council will have a cha, a chance at it too.
Excellent. Other matter?
I guess is the only thing that I would add is while we're doing all this STR work, to, you know, may throw in that partial ownership piece that so many other communities are running into of, you know, other ways around it and like what that looks like for us and whether that's something that just to, for once, I, you know, or to try to get ahead of the game instead of always chasing our tail and seeing if that's something that we want to address or not within the same.
Right.
Think we want to watch with that, what the other communities are having success with.
Like St. Helena right now.
Yeah.
Anything else?
Oh, one more thing. As we approach summer season, and I'm sure we'll have a coffee talk on the books, past years, we did a bike with the mayor, hike with the mayor. I'd like this summer to maybe do one or two kind of informal conversations at different times that could maybe accommodate more of our residents to show up.
We've done that, we've done some stuff at the golf course, Happy Hour, that was really successful, so we'll do that again.
I'll pick up, pick up poop with the mayor.
If the mayor doesn't like that part.
Yeah, that'd be cool too.
I got.
Eric talked to Burke about is he wants to start doing more informal tapings like he was doing daily.
During COVID.
Oh, I think that.
Pandemic, but do them every, once every week or two weeks or something like that. There's a lot of stuff going on and a lot of things just to try to put out there. A lot of people really like this.
I still have people thanking me for a minute, it's been a while, so I'd like to get back on that.
If you need help with hair and makeup, I can do that.
Oh, sweet. That's awesome. I have two quick things. Number one, in my continued research on the water issue, I met with two, the two guys from a company called Boomerang. And it is not what I thought it was. I thought you bought a machine and bottled your own water at your location. They would come and set up a bottling plant here, but it's tiny. They have compressed a clean room and a bottling plant down to 2,500 square feet. They would then either partner with or, or have somebody take over it. And instead of having to ship in bottled water in aluminum cans, they would do it right here. So from an ecological standpoint, it makes way more sense because there's no truck traffic. It almost works on the old milk delivery thing. Yeah. So I had, they were here, we walked around town, Tamra from the Arts met us, we walked through the Arts District, they loved it. They're going to be back in about 30 days. May bring them here to see you guys and explain what they do. It's a really cool process.
It's called Boomerang.
Boomerang. And they're said, they're in Boon, North Carolina right now, they're, they're hitting some college towns. But they really liked the vibe here and thought it'd be a great way. I think I'm trying to get them in touch with Jesse for Mountain Town's 2030. So that's the update on the search for water in the desert. The second thing, and I'm glad Zig is here. Might be asleep. Taking notes. The other day, there was pickleball out on the basketball courts outside. My concern is there is a segment of the population that uses that thing for free that I think is a great amenity to the community. I want to make sure that thing doesn't become a permanent home for outdoor pickleball because I think it's important for basketball, for the dudes and women that use that. So I don't know.
Couldn't agree more.
Would you? You, you know what you're doing. I just saw it and I thought, man, I hope we're not rousting these guys out because I think it's really important for the community that they have that.
Taken over the world.
Seriously, they're going to do pickleball in here, Zig told me.
It's like Scientology.
Council Tuesdays. All right, anything else? All right, we break till seven. Thank you. Alright, we break till seven. Thank you. Council regular meet, seven PM. Roll call, please.
Ms. Owens?
Yes.
Mr. Carlton?
Here.
Mr. Bergeron?
Here.
Ms. Sade?
Here.
Mr. Beckerman? Mr. Rankin?
Here.
Mayor Mamula?
Yes.
With approval of minutes, uh, for the town council, May tenth, twenty twenty-two. Any, uh, anything to talk about? Everybody good? Minutes stand as presented. Agenda rec. No changes to the agenda, it stands as presented. We go to communications to council. Citizens comments, these are non-agenda items only. Three-minute timeline, please. Anyone that's not staff, I don't know, nobody's here. And with that, the public hearing is closed for citizens' comments. We have a couple pieces of continued business tonight. The first is second reading, Council Bill number seventeen, series twenty twenty-two. There's an ordinance amending development code pertaining to off-street parking requirements.
Good evening, Mayor and Chair, sorry, Mayor and Council. I'm used to talking to Jay. Um, Steffi Shrek here, I'm here for the second reading for parking code amendments, which implement, um, parking maximums and shared parking agreements. And with that, we'll take any questions or comments. Thank you.
You. Any questions on the staff report? Anyone in the public wish to comment on this second reading this evening? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed, is there a motion, Jeffrey?
On second reading. Will we pass Council Bill number seventeen, series twenty twenty-two, the title which has been read into the record?
Second.
There is a motion and a second. Any further discussion on the second reading? Roll call, please.
Mr. Rankin?
Yes.
Mr. Carlton?
Yes.
Mr. Beckerman?
Yes.
Ms. Owens?
Yes.
Mr. Bergeron?
Yes.
Mayor Mamula?
Yes. We also have a second reading for Council Bill number eighteen, series twenty twenty-two. This is an ordinance amending chapter five, title two of the Breckenridge Town Code pertaining to the jurisdiction of the liquor and marijuana licensing authority.
Mayor and Council, this is a bill on second reading to expand the jurisdiction of the licensing authority to process retail tobacco licenses. You know, if you have any questions.
Are there any questions for the town attorney? About this? Seeing none? Anyone in the public wish to comment on this second hearing? And with that, the public hearing is closed. Is there a motion?
Second reading. I'm moving past Council Bill number eighteen, series twenty twenty-two, the title which has been read into the record.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Ms. Sade?
Yes.
Mr. Rankin?
Yes.
Ms. Owens?
Yes.
Mr. Carlton?
Yes.
Mr. Bergeron?
Yes.
Mr. Beckerman?
Yes.
Mayor Mamula?
Yes. Uh, we have no first readings this evening. We do have a resolution. It is resolution number twelve. Series twenty twenty-two, resolution expressing the intent of the town to be reimbursed for certain expenses relating to certain capital expenditures associated with a financing or workforce housing project.
Yes, good evening, Lori Best.
Lori.
For the record, um, this resolution, um, will enable us to re- reimburse expenses that we might incur in the pre-development, um, and design, um, phase of a potential project out on Airport Road. We recommend approval. I, there is one change, um, to note, um, in your motion that in section two, um, the town intends to finance approximately twelve million dollars, potentially through COP. It says eleven million dollars, so you could note that in the, uh, motion.
Thank you, Lori. Any questions for Lori this evening? No, any one in the public wish to comment on this resolution? The public hearing is closed. Is there a motion?
I'm moving past resolution number twelve, series twenty twenty-two, with the change of section to, uh, the number of eleven million goes to twelve million, which is better. And the title has been read into the record worse.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Beckerman?
Yes.
Ms. Sade? Ms. Owens?
Yes.
Mr. Bergeron? Mr. Rankin?
Yes.
Mr. Carlton?
Yes.
Mayor Mamula?
Yes. Alright, we have planning kid, uh, planning commission decisions for May seventeenth, twenty twenty-two. Any call-ups this evening?
Mayor Mamula, I'd like to make a motion to call up planning case two zero two two dash zero one one eight, Gondola subdivision three fifty and three fifty-five, North Park Avenue.
And call it up to the next meeting?
Yes.
Which is.
Uh, could I make a clarification in that, please? Just so you know, um, Mark Truckee for the record, um, Tim Berry last summer in one of his last acts, made changes to the call-up procedures. And you guys adopted those. And, um, so, um, it used to read that you would schedule a call-up hearing for the next meeting, unless it was agreed between the applicant and they had to go later. You can still go ahead and do it for the next reading or next meeting, but, um, you have up to a hundred and twenty days now to do that. So that's, that's at your discretion, so I just wanted to clarify that for you.
How do we?
Determine the best.
Do that? How do we determine the best date?
It's, it's based on your schedule essentially, and the whole thought was, I remember one of the last ones you had is like, we had to, you had to push it out several meetings, you had to get permission from the applicant to do that, cause you had these stacked up agendas. So I don't know if that is a case for the next meeting. I know it's a little busy, but anyway, I just wanted you to be aware of that, to have that discretion.
Would the motion then just say to a date sometimes in the next hundred and twenty days?
Um, I, I believe you wanna set it now, if you can.
We do wanna set it.
Yeah.
I mean, it doesn't really matter as far as our work session agenda, because you're gonna, it's a night meeting, hearing. So it's just, you know, if you wanna, if the applicant's good with it and you wanna get it done, let's, you know, schedule it for the next meeting.
Fair enough.
June fourteenth.
Okay, there is a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
I'll second.
There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
May I just?
Yeah.
I feel compelled to point out that I went back between first and second reading and read, um, the development code nine dash two dash four dash five. And it says, lots shall take the form of plain geometrics, geometric shapes, except where topographic conditions require otherwise for environmentally sensitive development. So I just wanted you all to know that the second clause, I don't know that that was made clear earlier today.
Thank you. I, um, will just tell you all that I am gonna vote against the call-up, because I don't feel that the, the language in, uh, nine dash two dash four dash five C is specific enough to this. And while Jay is correct that the subdivision code, you have to pass the subdivision code as an absolute policy, the words in the subdivision code itself, this one begins with in general. So I feel that I am compelled to follow the advice of staff and the planning commission. So I'm gonna vote against the call-up. And that's the only reason. So with that, we have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Carlton?
Yes.
Ms. Owens?
Yes.
Mr. Beckerman?
Yes.
Mr. Bergeron?
Yes.
Mr. Rankin?
Yes.
Ms. Sade? Ms. Mayor Mamula?
Yeah, uh, no. Alright, and with that, the Gondola subdivision three fifty and three fifty-five North Park Avenue, PL two zero two two zero one one eight is called up to the next meeting. Thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
It is a de novo hearing at the next meeting, correct?
We'll review everything in the subdivision application.
Um, we will. Yes. Yeah, it's a totally new hearing. For subdivision only. Uh, okay, and with that, uh, any other, other matters this evening? Nope, uh, scheduled meetings are listed, and with that, we are adjourned. Seven oh nine, buddy, you said seven ten. It's pretty close, isn't it?